Welcome back to the council meeting for May 25. Tony, could you please call roll?
Menas. Morales.
Ellen.
Here.
Roscoe. Davis.
Here.
Asparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Liccardo.
President, thank you.
And then Henry is going to play a video regarding interpretation.
Well, here as well.
Present as well, Tony, this is Sergio.
Great.
Hola y bienvenidos a esta reunión. Para acceder a la función de interpretación, haga clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior de la ventana de Zoom y seleccione el idioma que desea. Para escuchar claramente el audio de interpretación, le recomendamos que también seleccione la opción para silenciar el audio original, que es la opción más baja en el menú después de hacer clic en el icono del globo.
Xin chào và cảm ơn quý vị đã tham dự buổi họp ngày hôm nay. Để truy cập vào phần thông dịch của ứng dụng Zoom, xin nhấn vào biểu tượng hình quả đi cầu ở phía dưới của màn hình và chọn ngôn ngữ theo ý muốn của quý vị. Để nghe rõ lời khuyên dịch, chúng tôi khuyến khích quý vị chọn chức năng tắt âm thanh góc nằm ở phía cuối trong phần tùy chọn của biểu tượng quả đi cầu.
Alright, thank you. So I'll ask for guidance from Nora on this. I like to call items 8.1 and 10.3 together. That's a DIREDON Affordable Housing Implementation Plan and 10.3, the City Initiate General Plan Amendment, mending the DIREDON Station Area Planning and Forming Rezoning. What I'd like to do is to proceed with the presentation and public comment on these items. Well, then, I believe we'll vote on them separately. And then we'll take on item 10.2 thereafter. Is that the legally appropriate way to proceed, Nora?
Yeah, you can do that in 8.1 and 10.3 were noticed together in any event. So yes, that's fine.
Okay, great. So welcome, Anthony and team. And Johnny.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager. And I'm just confirming that we are starting with items 8.1 and 10.3. Or are we starting with item 10.2? I think that we should be starting with 10.2. I'll just ask Nora to confirm again, or in perhaps Johnny.
Johnny, do you have a preference?
Johnny, do you?
Yeah, I mean, I think 10.2 should go first. That's because that's the EIR for the project, and I think that should go first and the other ones can follow.
Okay, we'll do that then. Let's call off the, call it all off. Thank you, Rosalyn, for the suggestion. We'll call item 10.2, which is the Downtown West Mixed-Use Plan. We'll have a presentation and then a presentation from the applicant, namely Google. And then we'll go to community comment on that item.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. And we're going to bring up the presentation now. And I'll just go ahead and get started as the presentation is loading. So again, good evening, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. I'm Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager, and the city team is very excited to present the staff analysis and recommendations for the Downtown West Mixed-Use Plan. I want to note that this presentation, including translations in Spanish and Vietnamese, is available on the City Plugs webpage for this agenda item, so members of the public can follow along. This is an extraordinary milestone for the project and has been an incredible team effort, coordinating with many members of our community who have volunteered their time. They've shared their knowledge and lived experiences. And we've also worked with many of our community partners, the Station Area Advisory Group, and of course, Google and their project team. This work has evolved over two-plus years. And in sharing the various components of the project, you will hear from several city staff this evening. Before we start, I want to acknowledge that the city team is standing on the shoulders of former Deputy City Manager Kim Wallace, who provided thoughtful, steady leadership to all of us. Next slide. Through this process, together with the community and the Google team, we have learned that we can agree on values and outcomes, what kind of place we want to create, and that it's more about than just land uses and building heights. In fact, it's about enhancing people's lives, providing new opportunities to people who haven't always had them, and providing better access to a variety of services, providing more choices, with the outcome of actually lifting up everyone in our community. This encourages us to see one another as neighbors. And this is what equitable city planning is really all about. This is very complicated work. It can be taxing and trying, but it results in good fruit and in good outcomes. Next slide. We acknowledge that so much work has been done in the past. In fact, over two decades of effort, including that of the Good Neighbor Committee, which was formed back in 2009 that led to the goals and aspirations of the 2014 DIREDON Station Area Plan. The Downtown West Project also builds upon the downtown vision. And it is this collective vision that calls for a DIREDON Station area that is vibrant, transit-oriented district of downtown and a place for all of San Jose residents to use and enjoy. A place that is integrated into the surrounding community and a place with homes, affordable homes for people of different income levels, a place with offices and job opportunities, a place with arts and culture and entertainment, parks, trails, retail offerings and services, and a place with lots of fun places to eat, to gather, to people-watch, and to enjoy nature. Next slide. The city and the community cannot achieve this vision on our own. It requires a private sector partner to invest and to implement. And this takes us to the memorandum of understanding that was executed between the city and Google back in December 2018. The goals of the MOU include creating a balanced mixed-use development with both market rate and affordable housing, supporting transit by optimizing density, as well as effectively managing parking and improving the overall transportation network and pursuing equitable development to maximize the benefits and minimize the impacts to our residents, especially to our disadvantaged communities. I want to highlight that the city council's direction on the top three community benefit priorities, which included affordable housing, anti-displacement, and job training and opportunity pathways. And we are very excited to share with you this evening how these goals have been met in the project. Now, I'm going to turn over the presentation over to Lori Severino, DIREDON Program Manager, who will continue the presentation with an overview of our community engagement. Lori.
Thank you, Rosalynn. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lori Severino, the DIREDON Program Manager, responsible for the public engagement process to Downtown West and the other big projects in the DIREDON Station area. So this slide summarizes the evolution of the Downtown West Project and the rounds of outreach and engagement that were based on the key milestones in the process. Each round covered the other separate but related planning efforts, such as the city's amendments to the DIREDON Station Area Plan, given the importance of coordination between these projects. So the project visioning began over three years ago. The city established the stationary advisory group and conducted a broad public engagement process in 2018. This ended with a set of desired outcomes in the DIREDON Station area and informed the memorandum of understanding with Google, which served as a foundation for the project and the city's review process moving forward. Google and the city continued with public outreach in 2019, both before and after the middle of the Downtown West application in October. In spring 2020, outreach and engagement shifted to the virtual format due to the COVID-19 emergency and included an online survey on community benefit priorities and other topics. And last fall, we conducted a round to gather feedback on draft documents, including the Downtown West design standards and guidelines. In April of this year, we released the staff-recommended draft development agreement and collected public comments through meetings and an online comment form. Next slide, please. This shows all of the engagement activities the city team has led over the last three-plus years on the DIREDON program and projects. This does not include meetings with the planning commission, city council, or other commissions that included a DIREDON item, nor all of the outreach and engagement that Google made. The stationary advisory group has been central to this process, but we also used a wide variety of methods and best practices for inclusive engagement with the intent of reaching all segments of the population. So for example, we started a mini-grant program to partner with seven community-based organizations on outreach and engagement in order to reach new voices and increase participation. We also managed a website and email list to share information and report back to the community. The participation among so many community members and organizations has made a big difference on the process and outcomes for the Downtown West project. We really appreciate all of your time, energy, and input. So with that, I'll turn it over to John, too.
Thank you, Lori. Good evening, Council. John, too, supervising planner with the Planning Division. What we have before the council day is an entitlement project that includes up to 7.3 million square feet of commercial office space, up to 5,900 residential units, and up to a half a million square feet of active land use space, up to 300 hotel rooms, up to 800 limited-term corporate accommodations, up to 100,000 square feet of event and conference space, a district searching approach to deliver onsite resources, including designated infrastructure zones with up to two onsite centralized utility plants, onsite logistics centers, approximately 15 acres of parks, pauses, and open space, including 4.8 acres of public parkland and 10.2 acres of private open space, as well as various other improvements to the public realm to improve transit access, pedestrian and bicycle circulation to facilitate connectivity, both within the site and to and from the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the list of actions associated with the project versus the certification of the environmental impact report, which I'll discuss more on the next slide. The project was taken before the Airport Line Use Commission to determine if the general plan amendment and zoning are consistent with the comprehensive line use plan for San Jose International Airport, also known as the club. They elect found the project to be inconsistent to the club's height and noise policy as it relates to building part 77 height and proposed outdoor open private space for the residential use. Section 21670 of the California Public Utility Code allows the city to overrule the determination with a two-thirds vote of the city council. The city has considered ALUX's determination in common letters from both the commission and the Caltrans Divisionary of NUTS. There's a city's position that we are able to make the findings that the proposed actions consistent with the code set forth in the California Public Utility Code and is outlined in detail in the resolution. The height would not present a safety concern as a project would require buildings subject to the FA heights to obtain determination no hazard. In regards to residential private open outdoor space, it should not create noise issues as the project is located in downtown San Jose, an urban environment, which is accustomed to existing airport operation and other urban background noise. In addition, there are several actions related to the line use designation, height limits, and developmental standards to accommodate the proposed program. The applicant's presentation will go into more detail of the Downtown West design standards and guidelines, which are incorporated into the plan development permit and is codified in the plan development zoning district. Council's action also includes consideration of the development agreement and associated staff recommendation on unallocated community benefit funding, which Nancy Klein will discuss later in the presentation. The project also includes two amendments to the boundaries of the San Jose Waterwork Building and Southern Pacific Depot Landmark and an amendment to an existing historic preservation permit for the San Jose Waterwork Building. Also included are a vested tenant map, construction impact mitigation plan, major encroachment permits for the district utility system, street scape improvements, and a partial vacation several streets. These approvals will govern the subdivision and plans for the infrastructure, transportation network, and as it relates to both onsite and public creditway. Next slide, please. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the city prepared an environmental impact report for the project. An EIR is an informational document whose purpose is to disclose the potential physical environmental effects on a proposed project and identify mitigation measures and alternatives to reduce those effect. An EIR does not promote a project or otherwise offer a pain as to the merits of the project. The EIR identified several significant and unavoidable impacts, which even with the implementation of mitigation measures, cannot be reduced to less than significant. The significant and unavoidable impacts are to air quality, historic resources, land use, noise, population, housing. Due to the significant unavoidable impact, city council would have to adopt a statement of overriding consideration, stating that the benefits of the project outweighed the identified environmental impact. In accordance with CEQA, the draft EIR was published on the city's webpage and made available for review by the public organizations and agencies on October 7, 2020. The 62-day extended review period ended December 8, 2020. The city received 34 comment letters during the review period. None of the comment letters raised issues that would require additional analysis, requiring recirculation of the draft EIR. The city then prepared the First Amendment to the draft EIR, containing responses to comments received during the public period and minor revisions to the draft EIR text and figure. The First Amendment was published on the city's webpage on April 16, 2021. I'll now turn the presentation over to Nancy Klein from the Office Economic Development. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So very happy to be here today. And it's actually been four years that we've been working on this project together and indeed about 20 that we've been working on the DSAP, back to the Good Neighbor Committee. I want to start out by saying this slide encapsulates the total project and community benefits, including Google's expenditures on voluntary project features. The total community benefits amount is $200 million, as you see on the far right. It's an extraordinary achievement, particularly because in many development agreements, the bulk of the community benefits are expended on open space, sustainability, and local hiring. The Downtown West Project achieves all of that, but in the base of the project. The $200 million is in addition to all of those investments. On the left-hand side, you see a brief description of the affordable housing benefits. The project achieves a 25% affordable housing goal. As a result of the work and the project, there'll be four land sites that will be dedicated to the city. The first three are a part of the base or city's baseline affordable housing requirements. And yet, one more will be added and dedicated as part of community benefits. Of the thousand units of affordable housing to be built, staff anticipates that fully 40% of the units constructed on those four sites will be 30% area mean median income or lower. Over the last, which is a remarkable goal as well. Over the last week's, staff and Google have continued to refine project outcomes. And the first site will come to us within 120 days of resolving any lawsuits that are derived from the project, which may be nine months to a year from now. Moving quickly to develop affordable housing is the best way to discourage anti, to discourage displacement. In the second column, at the heart of the community benefits package, is the proposed creation of a roughly $155 million fund to be targeted to community stabilization and opportunity pathways. This is truly unique. The fund in this formulation is the result of the voices of the community who have historically been marginalized, combined with the listening and partnership of the Downtown West team and the city team. A partial list of those that participated and shaped the outcome of the fund's creation are Latinos United, Working Partnerships, the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, Somos Mayfair, Sacred Heart Community Services Pact, the South Bay Labor, and SV Rising. On this, the anniversary of George Floyd's death, our community marks this somber day with a renewed spirit of commitment to each other, supporting the resilience of those that have suffered the most. The funding decisions of this fund will be made by those with lived experience and of experts in the field supporting an end to inequity. 7.5 million will be allocated as part of the community benefits and will come early in an effort to address urgent needs for activities such as tenant protection and job readiness. In the third column, you see Google's plans for 15 acres of parks, open space and trails, net new, net new greenhouse, no net new is what I was trying to say, thank you, greenhouse gas emissions, innovation in approach to utilities, and ecological enhancements and historic preservation. You'll also note that Google will spend at least $1 billion in voluntary project features. Next slide, please. The development agreement is a legally binding and enforceable document. An annual review of the development agreement will set out and mark the performance and compliance of the document, the progress. This will be done in order to maintain the rights, the vested rights conferred by the development agreement. At 10 and 20 years, respectively, two and four million square feet of office must be completed or the associated community benefits must be paid to again maintain the vested rights. In addition, Google is limited to transferring office development rights to no more than 40% of constructed office square footage to ensure the growth of jobs and tax base. Next slide, please. And I'll turn this over to Rachel Vanderbee. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. My name is Rachel Vanderbee, and I'm the Deputy Director of the Housing Department. I'll be providing an overview of the housing aspects of the development agreement for the proposed Google development. A clear priority in our community has been the need for affordable housing as a part of the plan for the Downtown West Project and for the DIREDON Station area overall. The development agreement utilizes the three Ps approach to providing a comprehensive affordable housing plan for the project, including housing production, preservation, and protection strategies. The primary goal related to the production of housing in the development is to ensure that 25% of the housing in the area be affordable to residents ranging from extremely low to moderate-income households. Next slide, please. In totality, the agreement includes the dedication of four sites for the future development of 800 affordable units and 200 moderate units that are built within the development, totaling 1,000 affordable units, which is 25% of the proposed 4,000 units for the agreement. I am now going to break this all down so you can understand how we came to this $1,000, or $1,000 number, anyway. In order to meet the city's requirements under the inclusionary housing ordinance and the commercial linkage fee, Google will be dedicating three sites to the city for affordable housing development, and they'll be building 170 moderate-income units dispersed within the market rate housing and will be paying $83 million in commercial linkage fees. Additionally, Google will dedicate a fourth site for affordable housing development at the beginning of the development process. Google will also be providing an additional 30 moderate-income units, bringing the total number of moderate-income units to 200 across the development. The value of the four sites for affordable housing development, 200 moderate-income units, and the commercial fee, like the commercial linkage fee payments, total $183 million in affordable housing contributions that will pave the way for 1,000 affordable units to be built across the entire development. Next slide, please. This image shows the proposed development with, with housing development colored tan across the site. The 200 moderate-income units will be incorporated into the housing development as it's built. The four sites dedicated for affordable housing are indicated with a darker shade of tan, and the Autumn Street site is called out on the right side of the image. The early dedication of the Autumn Street site will allow the city to put shovels into the ground and get started building affordable housing as soon as possible. I will now turn the presentation over to Nicole.
Thank you, Rachel. Good evening, everybody. I'm Nicole Burnham. I'm the Deputy Director with the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. I'm going to walk you through the parks and open space portion of the proposed development. As has been mentioned previously, the proposed open space concept calls for 15 acres that will support public life in various ways. This includes
Oh, yeah, I see what happens.
4.8 acres of city-dedicated park and 10.2 acres of project-sponsored open space. The city-dedicated 4.8 acres, which is shown in the dark green, darkest of the green colors in this graphic, includes both parks and critical sections of the Los Gatos Creek Trail that will provide connectivity from the Del Monte Park area up into Arena Green. Exhibit E of the development agreement documents how these spaces will be delivered and how the project meets its parkland obligation for up to 4,000 housing units, including 800 affordable units. The development agreement further defines the standards associated with the 10.2 acres of project-sponsored open space. These project-sponsored open spaces consist of parks, natural spaces along Los Gatos Creek, mid-block passages, and semi-public open space. These are all being provided in excess of the project's parkland obligation. Of the 10.2 acres of the project-sponsored open space, slightly more than seven will be subject to a restrictive covenant that will ensure public access. This includes publicly accessible parks, as well as areas along Los Gatos Creek and its riparian corridor, which will provide access to nature and educational opportunities that are critical to our urban park system. The four acres of private park space will operate similar to city parks, but will be owned and maintained by Google. Operating hours, rules, and reservable areas for these spaces, all of which are similar to our existing city parks, are outlined in the development agreement. The remaining three acres of the 10.2 that is not subject to restrictive covenant will serve as mid-block passages and semi-private open spaces with uses that further enhance the public realm. An example of this type of use can be seen already in downtown at Paseo de San Antonio, which connects Plaza de Cesar Chavez to San Jose State, where we have a pedestrian corridor with, with public-facing uses and restaurant spaces facing the, facing the public corridor. With that, I'm going to turn it to Lori Mitchell.
Actually, this is Matt Keno. I'll take this next one, and then I'll turn it to Lori. So the district systems, part of the favorite part of the Public Works team, to provide all the utility and other service, utility services to the site will be a district system that'll work in tandem with the city networks to provide resources across the development. This will include an underground utilitor to deliver wastewater, recycled water, energy, and electricity with via microgrid. It's located mostly on private sites, but there are some public crossings that will be covered through encroachment agreements with the city. A number of infrastructure improvements will also be included as part of the development, such as the upsizing of storm and sanitary systems and other larger improvements, such as the reconstruction of Western, West San Fernando Street Bridge and the Los Gatos Creek channel improvements. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lori Mitchell for the next slide.
Lori, you may be muted right now.
Apologies. Sorry for that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Yes, sorry for that. So I'm Lori Mitchell. I'm the Director of Community Energy. This project also includes an electrical microgrid system. This is consistent with the development goals, as well as council priority. This is consistent with the development's goals as well as council priority for increased energy resiliency as well as onsite renewable energy. There are multiple options for this electric service delivery. The first option is PG&E Retail Service through their Community Microgrid Enablement Program. The second option is City Provided Service and the third option is Private Google Provided Service. It's important to note that construction would be funded and performed by Google for all options. It's also important to note that there's significant initial additional analysis that is still to be completed for the city option. So some of that analysis includes the development of a business plan, a risk benefit assessment, as well as agreements. We do expect to bring forward a business plan for council consideration in the fall of 2021 and that there would be additional actions by council to form a city option in 2022 and beyond. It's also important to note that the evaluation of the options will be funded by Google with the selection of a final option likely in 2022 based on the best alignment with the development schedule and the project's goals. And with that, I will turn it over to Jessica Zank.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jessica Zank, Deputy Director for the Department of Transportation. The Downtown West Transportation Network is really one that puts people at the center of the project. And the project also has a huge and very appropriate emphasis on access, given the proximity to Deer Don Station and to the SAP Center. This network is really focused on increasing both the number and the safety of people moving around into the area, including through roughly five miles of new and reconstructed roadways designed with enhanced sidewalks and protected bikeways, proven methods to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety. Other improvements include enhanced access to public transit, designs that inherently incorporate flexibility through shared streets and dynamic lanes that can be used for diverse things over the course of a day or over time as transportation needs, options, and technologies shift. There's also a significant emphasis on publicly accessible or shared parking, as I'll go into further. Next slide. Extensive analysis of transportation needs was conducted through this project, including through a local transportation analysis that helped identify thirty million dollars worth of improvements in addition to those within the project itself. These local transportation improvements include complete street improvements along Barack Obama Boulevard, formerly Autumn Street, including a contribution to the overcrossing of Byrd at two eighty, connecting better to the Gardner neighborhood. Support for transit projects recommended in the Deer Don Station Area Plan, multimodal improvements to Ozaray Avenue, both sidewalk and bikeway to trail gaps filled, improvements at key intersections that address the Valley Transportation Authority and State Congestion Management Plan requirements, and ten million dollars that are reserved for local needs identified through future detailed focused LTA's, Local Transportation Improvement. Next slide. Regarding the parking requirements, the parking program has been designed to efficiently support various needs. It will be open for transit users, other visitors alongside area employees, and prioritized for SAP Center patrons on event evenings and weekends. The minimum required parking at full buildout of the office program is four thousand parking spaces and the project could build up to four thousand eight hundred publicly accessible spaces at its own discretion. We appreciate the concerns about what will happen to parking and access during construction and for that reason, the project is also required to maintain at least two thousand eight hundred and fifty parking spaces available to SAP Center patrons at any phase of construction. This is approximately the same number of spaces within the eighty-acre project today. Next slide. I'm sorry, before, before this slide does show the location of that publicly accessible parking, that's great. And then if you wouldn't mind, go back a slide. Thank you, James. Perfect. Residential parking is also available within the project. The project may choose to build up to two thousand three hundred and sixty residential parking spaces. While there is no minimum parking requirement for homes, any residential parking that is built will be sold or rent separately from the housing, so as to lower housing costs for those who choose to live without a car. Finally, the city recognizes that it's extremely important to monitor and address any negative traffic or parking issues that arise due to the project and have established a neighborhood parking and traffic monitoring plan to do just that. Again, next slide, we'll see the location of that publicly accessible parking right there. Next slide. The project also has strict transportation demand management requirements that ultimately limits solo occupancy vehicle trips to a maximum of thirty-five percent. These requirements are a critical part of the way in which the project and the city will minimize traffic congestion, greatly reducing potential automobile trips that otherwise a project of this magnitude might produce and lowering greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution in line with the city's climate smart commitments. Non-compliance with these TDM requirements carry penalties of up to five million dollars per year. Next slide. First, it is extremely important to state upfront that the city of San Jose values our partners at Sharks Sports and Entertainment greatly. The Sharks bring us tremendous pride and vibrancy. With that in mind, the city and applicant have coordinated extensively with Shark Sports and Entertainment and had multiple consultants undertake supplementary analysis to understand how efficiently people who drive to and from the SAP Center will be able to do so with the project in place. The key findings of those consultant studies are listed for your review and information. But in summary, the city and Google absolutely hear the Sharks' critical need for efficient access and have worked to incorporate many of Shark Sports and Entertainment concerns. In addition, we will absolutely continue to coordinate and collaborate with Shark Sports and Entertainment moving forward and firmly believe that the Sharks will be able to succeed and in fact thrive with the proposed project as its neighbor, particularly given all of the new people and access brought to life by the project. Next slide. In April and May, the city, Shark Sports and Entertainment, and Google did continue to coordinate and to review and address Shark Sports and Entertainment concerns that came up over that timeframe. And I am pleased to share that this evening, city staff posted a supplemental memorandum describing additional clarifications to the Downtown West Project documents, to the zoning ordinance, the Development Agreement, and the Conformance Review Process and clarifications and commitments from the city, namely with respect to the incremental potential growth in transportation and parking management plan costs as well as other clarifications and commitments about the frontage of the SAP Center, adjacent roadways, and process improvements. And we have also posted information about a settlement agreement documenting these changes and the commitment from Shark Sports and Entertainment not to legally challenge the decisions made today and associated work. With the next slide, I will turn this over to Nancy Klein.
Jessica, thank you so very much. I just wanted to add one thing that since we added the supplemental memo to council tonight, we will be requesting that the supplemental memo be approved when you reach the point of consideration for the items before you this evening. With that, we are, we have looked at and thought about the city requirements from many angles. So here is one more take on the numbers. You'll see on the left that the city requirements, all in all, added up to roughly two hundred and fifty-four million dollars to satisfy the city's normal program requirements. And again, we mentioned the community benefits are two hundred million dollars and the voluntary project features will, will, will require over a billion dollars of investment. And I do want to note at least a few of these. The project will fulfill a ten percent disadvantaged business enterprise goal and thirty percent local hire goal. We don't have any other projects who specifically took on this goal, private projects. Also, again, noting the net zero energy and the infrastructure for eighty acres. Next slide, please. We wanted to tell you a little bit more about the Community Advisory Committee. As mentioned, the committee will have thirteen members, five with lived experience and eight with technical experience. All will have deep roots to San Jose and a commitment to furthering the work of racial equity, workforce development, affordable housing, and education. The committee will reflect the diversity of San Jose and the committee will also have three non-voting city representatives, one Google representative, and potentially other representatives from other major funders as it is one of the goals of the fund to attract investment from other companies and sources. Next slide. Now we'll go back to that overall public benefit slide and pay a special emphasis on the allocation or suggested allocation of the seven point five million dollars that will come to the project rapidly and then also to the twenty-two point three million of unallocated community benefits. City staff and the Google team recognize that despite all the work and listening, council will see what staff may have missed and what should be emphasized in a different way. In this presentation, staff has made recommendations on allocation to facilitate deliberations. Staff also notes that it is not required that the council allocate funds this evening. Funds could be allocated on a future subsequent council date. Next slide, please. Here we describe the recommended allocation of funding for the seven point five million dollars that will come to the city soon. The first is that as a result of recent conversations, Google will pay the city three million dollars after thirty days of approval of the project by the end of June. Google is doing this even though it's unusual, usually benefits are paid commensurate with, with the development of the project because Google recognizes the urgent needs associated with lapsing moratoriums and economic recovery. And the types of uses suggested are listed, tenant education, eviction, eviction protection services, and there has been much discussion in the community about a land trust and so we want to allocate pre-development dollars for feasibility to continue and deepen the conversation. Next, you'll note scholarship job training dollars and we want to emphasize that families facing displacement, those working in those families will be eligible and participate in these as well as young adults as well as the funds can be, can support undocumented workers. There are no restrictions. Also noted, for neighborhood programs that will support economic recovery for those in and around the Deer Don Station area, those who will be most impacted by project construction and implementation. There is an anticipated focus on gardener and further partnership between the community and gardener supporters as well as city park staff. Lastly, we know two hundred and fifty thousand dollars intended to advance the work of fund development, meaning the selection of the fund manager, preparation to initiate the committee, and mapping out how we'll go about supporting the creation of the five-year strategic plan. So three million dollars would come to the city thirty days after council approval and the remaining four point five would come a hundred and twenty days after final approval, pending any lawsuits, again, which could be nine months to a year. Next slide, please. Here, staff is identifying that twenty-two point three million dollars is yet to be allocated and will come to the city over time. Google will pay the city three dollars and five cents when office buildings reach temporary certificate of occupancy. Funding recommendations are identified in categories of use in order to provide flexibility as opportunities arise over time. Ten point three million dollars educational opportunity really geared toward economic mobility, giving students who most need it, adults, young adults, access to careers that could affect generations. Seven point five million of community stabilization, again, including ownership models, homeless outreach, and street-based services. The two point five million allocated or a proposed to be allocated really focuses on what we hope to be two locations for subsidized housing in and around Deer Don so that by paying for like the space, which could include, for example, the ground floor of one of the affordable housing projects, tenant improvements and perhaps dollars left over to further subsidize a nonprofit housing provider who could provide a sliding scale for those of payment for childcare for those in our community. And finally, two additional million dollars as seed funds for the programs in and around Deer Don as described earlier. Next slide, please. So here, well, all the city staff who participated in the project, please jump on. What we've asked council and community is that our team come together so that we can be seen if no moment, sorry, like this moment to really savor the work that's been accomplished. When is there such a time? This project has inspired so many. We have all been drawn together to make a difference and contribute to the collective future of San Jose. That is why we do what we do. This slide, the slide, go right back, this slide, you can go back one slide, James. This slide lists, oh, go, no, one more forward, sorry. The, the stationary advisor group, incredibly important as, as we were saying that, and I'll jump right back to that. We'd like to say, indeed, this has been a journey, as Alexa Renna likes to say, four years and many hours dedicated to listening, seeking to understand, problem solving, and brainstorming, and doing it all again, all one managing through a pandemic. Much gratitude to the SAG for the time and heart given, well beyond their day jobs. Our community outreach partners, which you see here, which Lori Severino had the good sense to make sure we commissioned in order to reach those who we don't usually reach. Next slide. Our city team. Next slide. Which takes two pages, as you can see, took many people, many hours. And our consultants, particularly to AP Heard from Skip Stone and Thomas Jansen and the HRA Team, brilliant people who worked for us like they would for their own families. Sorry, and to the city team who has been Sorry, and to the city team who it's been a joy to work with such smart diligent and committed people. With a special shout out to Kim Walsh, even though Rosalyn stole my thunder. And to our leadership, particularly Dave Sykes, who is wise and willing to take an informed risk and make a decision. To our city council who gave the project team time, guidance and vision. And lastly, to Mark Golan, Joe Van Bellingham. And the remarkable Alexa Arena. The Google project, if approved, sets a very high bar. For all that is yet to come in San Jose. And Google has been and is an extraordinary partner earnestly seeking to do good in our community. And now Mayor Alexa, the mayor and council Alexa will lead Google's project presentation.
Hi, I'm Joe Van Bellingham. I'm the senior director of global development. Well, good evening, I'm Ricardo, Vice Mayor Jones and council members. We appreciate you taking the time to consider our downtown west proposal and development agreement with public benefits. Before we begin, I really want to thank council, your amazing city staff, as you can see. SAG and the members of the community for your dedication and valuable input in helping us get to this moment. I remember firmly those initial community walks that helped us understand both the history of the neighborhoods as well as the concerns and aspirations of what the project could be. I'm hoping you agree that the project's thoughtful nips of uses elevated sustainability objectives and community benefits package that reflects the MOU's shared goals in 2018 which were informed by the community. The plan we are considering tonight is one that was co-created with input from thousands of touchpoints with the community. From those initial community walks to dozens of community meetings, design workshops and more, we're very proud of and thankful for this process. I would like to transition to Alexa to give you more details on the project and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Nancy. It's been an incredible partnership indeed. And it's one that's included so many. So a lot of people have referenced the MOU. And I was not here for the MOU, but the ambition behind it, the combined goals to create something different were remarkable. I think as we wrote the MOU together, we didn't know the how, we knew the what. And the process has been extraordinarily humbling and something we have learned so much from organizationally and has brought us to something that is really not a Google plan at all, but a community plan, a partnered plan with the city and the community to bring a part of downtown forward. And we know and are really respectful that this is 10 years in the making. That the city has envisioned this for some time. We were inspired by that vision and wanted to come to help contribute to it. As we took the specificity from an area plan into a project, many different conversations came up, especially as we aggregated that with the MOU goals. And we did a tremendous amount of work that I want to commend so many people who are likely on the TV or on the Zoom today and contributing and listening and hopefully speaking a bit later. But we got thousands of touchpoints and what we tried to do was really think about different ways that we could reach people and interact with them, whether it's in their own neighborhoods and their own communities, bringing them on site, creating more interactive visual mechanisms, but also sitting down and having really good conversations. And those thousands of data points created something really unique. We've heard so many specific ideas around how the type of gathering space and social space that downtown west really wanted to become. Likewise, as we shifted into COVID, we want to thank those who continued on with us. We had a variety of in-conversation series. We had videos that went out with feedback loops for them. And we had a really deep process with many in the equity community and education community on how we think of that important issue of equitable development. Ultimately, this has led to a plan that is of the city, of the community and very much that integrates all of these aspirations into one layered plan. And so we often talk about that as a social infrastructure plan, which we are committed to in the long haul. It also transformed and built on the foundation of the general plan to support this part of San Jose as a central part of innovation and regional employment. But to do that in a way that didn't feel like a financial district or a Google campus, but truly felt like a central social district that could become the place where many parts of San Jose can come together, where many different types of people can come together for different reasons. And really that is the vibrancy we love of our cities. As that matured into the nuts and bolts of the framework plan, it really took a form where it was not about office, it was about sort of what we call this one-to-one, a very mixed-use environment. We took the height capacity, we utilized that height capacity from the additional OEI heights largely to reinvest in alternative uses like housing, cultural and open space. In the end, it became very much as a part of San Jose that represents the culture and who San Jose is and the values of San Jose. So we're so excited to be able to build a project with 24, 5% affordable housing in the DSA, a truly integrated community to think about how we can really bring retail, cultural arts, education and those active uses to the doorstep of some of the most impressive transit in the nation. And how we can also juxtapose that to the richness that we all need around nature and ecology and the care we need to have around our climate with a goal of zero net new carbon emissions. So ultimately, how we got there was a spirit of partnership, as Nancy said. This is about a long haul and we are not a developer who's coming in for five years, but we're really about thinking about how we can become an integrated part of the neighborhood. I also want to pause on this day, also in the context of COVID and so many things that have happened over the last couple of years since we've had the MOU. It has created a call to action that many have listened to within the community and within the city and within our team in order to rethink how we build and grow our cities better. And so this part of downtown can really represent the values and the creativity of of where San Jose and its density wants to go. And how we can think about that a little bit differently around how much we need nature and natural resources. 20% tree canopy, for those who don't know, reduces depression rates by 50%. That's an astounding figure. It shows that these are public health measures as much as they are planning measures. Likewise, we know we need to find a smarter, greener way forward. And there's been incredible partnership of the city to get to those net zero goals, to build the seven miles of mobility infrastructure that's going to allow us to travel in different ways and connect in different ways and to build an ecological layer across the project. We often talk about this as a project that also needs to seek to look and plan not in its boundaries, but as a complete neighborhood. We shouldn't be looking and we didn't plan as it relates to the 80 acres. We planned in concentric circles, if you will. We planned on what are the 15-minute walks? How close are we to other resources? How do we build on those resources and add to them, et cetera? So that was a really important part of the foundation of what the community, the neighborhoods told us and that folks like Dan really helped influence the thinking on. We also went through a really deep process where this is where some of our greatest learning came from of what does it mean to have a fund that invests resources or that tries to approach issues like displacement and like opportunity pathways. And so for us, what we learned from that was the central component. And we learned together, I should say, we as the city and Google and many others of how do we think about not just how the fund allocates, but also who allocates it? And that empowerment of how we think about where those funds needs to go has to shift from kind of direct checks, which might have been the way of the past into the hands of the people who understand it and experience it the most. And so we're really excited for this first step of the fund. We're so excited that there is going to be this intellectual horsepower and experience horsepower that we can tap into and continue to collaborate beyond the dollars. Ultimately, what we learned was none of this is really about design. Design becomes the container, it's the reflection of all of these goals and aspirations. And so really the design guidelines are a reflection of that along with the continuation of the project features and these community benefits and how we use our base fees. And we are looking for a platform that is building an ecosystem for the long haul. Certainly, this is a moment in time and we see it as the start versus the beginning. So I'm just going to speed up a little bit and transition us into those design guidelines and some of their aspirations to hold many of these important goals. We obviously are not a single building, we're a composition of buildings. And likewise, we're not an area plan. We have sort of couple of models to lean on where we see either people coming in in this type of circumstance and designing it all at once, but often that feels of a particular time, a particular hand, and you can see a repetitive solution versus creating a highly contextual solution that can get a bit more specific than an area plan because it is more contained, but can hold all those goals that range from land use to buildings to open space, even lining and signage of how do we have a learning layer, a layer that represents and celebrates the history of San Jose and even things like the history of learning around climate action and sustainability. So as the design guidelines are set up, they're really there to go into that level of specificity, articulate these thematic ideas in very practical ways in order to think of things like how do we treat a setback that's against an adjacent historic neighborhood? What are the different ways within that container that we can use things like materiality, green facades? Architecture en masse and facade moves in order to really break down scale. Likewise, we absolutely believe that there is a juxtaposition between that nature and highly urban areas, that there needs to be areas where we can tap into the incredible events and celebratory culture that exists in San Jose. And what better place to put that than along Santa Clara? Where, you know, we really think about how the edges can work in order to support that more public and social-facing element. As a juxtaposition to that, we have the creek and we are able to use that creek as a place that feels like you're not in the city, but is right at the doorstep of transit. And so all of these moves are very specifically highlighted in the design guidelines in terms of their intent with flexibility on how to get to that intent, which leads for creativity. A last example might be also utilizing things intent-wise like what would consider maybe a workhorse piece of the district system's central utility plant and utilizing those as opportunities for interactive educational, education and social engagement. So it's been a very thoughtful process across those design aspirations and across the social infrastructure plan, which is really the three components of the base project features, the community benefits and the city requirements. And we are again very thankful for all those who came on this journey with us and we hope that next phase of partnering is going to only bring us closer to realizing our collective vision. So thank you and thank you for your consideration.
Alexa, thank you. Thank you for your partnership, your team's great work for the wonderful presentation. Nancy or Rosalyn, do you have anything further?
Nothing else further. That concludes our presentations, Mayor. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for their extraordinary hard work that got us to this point. This has been a very, as Alexa would say, a long journey. I know she used that term journey quite a bit in meetings that we all had. And I appreciate that very much because the metaphor is apt. I'm also reminded of the expression of Will Rogers, that the road to success is dotted with many tempting parking spaces. And it's rare that an expression actually has little truth in some instances. So I wanted to thank the extraordinary team that worked together to keep us on the road to success and we certainly hope with a positive vote today. And continued hard work together, we will get to success. And certainly it starts with the community. Includes Google, of course, that's making this transformational investment and everybody on the city team works so hard. I want to take the unusual step of actually thanking some folks before we get to community comment. We know we do want to hear from all the members of the community. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank those who have been working so very hard. And really, starting with the community, because after all, you know, this is a time of great division nationally and here we are on the anniversary of George Floyd's murder. And we're reminded of all the challenges we face in our communities and throughout the country. And there's tremendous mistrust of government and suspicion of big tech. And it could have been easy for many of our community members simply to succumb to slogans and simplistic thinking, but thousands of our community members rolled up their sleeves. And rather than jumping in with one camp or another, a lot of community members pushed and prodded and co-created. And they urged the city and Google to stretch, to reach higher, to break barriers and create something unique, something that could fulfill our collective lofty aspirations for our community and our city. And so so many community members attended more than 100 community meetings, thousands gave feedback online, tens of thousands visit the website to learn more. And I guess I was looking through some of the letters we got from so many members of the community. Marie Burns lives near Southwest Expressway said, "This project creates the future San Jose that I want to live in." And I think that describes it so well. I want to thank, first and foremost, as we go through the names, I just want to thank the Google team, you know, at least on a couple of occasions over the prior half decade before this project got started. I had begged and pleaded and pitched for Google to take a look at our downtown transit center. And I think I talked to George Sala, who used to be on the real estate team and I recall talking to David Ratcliffe and others. And generally I got a response of, well, you know, we'll think about it. And really, we only got a first date about five years ago. And it was in late 2016 when I got a phone call from Mark Golan. And I suspect it wasn't a coincidence. It was only days, maybe a couple of weeks after the voters approved measure B, which enabled us to bring bar to downtown San Jose because Mark clearly saw the vision for what downtown could become with a massive transit investment. And I had a couple of subsequent meetings with him and Joe Van Bellingham and the team. We explored the visions for downtown and they saw this extraordinary possibility for partnership with the city and a partnership that I think many others with perhaps presented with the same opportunity didn't see. And I want to thank them for and everybody at Google for seeing the possibility. Their vision was not for a campus, but for a vibrant urban village. And that was consistent with our community's vision. Something that would transform downtown west that would enable our community to achieve our longstanding aspirations for for a vibrant core in our city. And it was a time not long after, I think a couple of months later, that another major tech company was famously demanding billions of subsidies from cities throughout the country for its second headquarters. But Mark was very clear and we were on the same page from the start of our conversation. They wouldn't ask the city for a dime. The city wouldn't cut any taxes or fees. There'd be no land giveaways. Google wanted simply to be treated fairly, to have predictability that they followed the rules, they'd be able to move forward. And of course, Google did far more than follow the rules. They made massive commitments to the community. Obviously, the largest private sector investment in our city's history. And as Nancy described so well, more than a billion dollars in public benefits and everything from affordable housing to scholarships for for our kids, did parks and trails. I really want to thank Alexa Arena who spearheaded the initiative, has got the community process going and just did a masterful job leading the project, managing on multiple fronts, negotiating on multiple fronts, along with Mark and Joe and the rest of the team. Big shout out to Javier Gonzalez and Ricardo Benavides for exceptional work engaging with the city and the community stakeholders. I think it certainly helped that Javier was someone who grew up to south of downtown, understood our city and I think people recognized that his heart was invested in making this work for all of us. I also want to thank Rebecca I also want to thank Rebecca Prozan, who helped particularly on the legislative front as we're pushing to get legislation through Sacramento. And everybody on the Google executive team, Ruth Porak, Kent Walker, many others who I know were committed to seeing this through. And the great architectural team, Site Lab, Urban Studio, Laura Crescimo, everybody on their team worked together to make something brilliant happen. Secondly, I want to thank our city team. Starting with Dave Sykes, you know, after the conversations with Mark, I went to Dave and said, hey, we got something extraordinary here. And Dave committed he would be involved and push hard and make sure that we had people driving this that would get it done. And he committed that to me. I remember in that conversation. And of course, he got Kim Wallace on board immediately, who did an outstanding job leading and coordinating the city's efforts for several years until she just left the city very recently. And again, I want to acknowledge Kim as she was acknowledged. And then, of course, the team that you've just heard from Rosalyn and Nancy Rosen Shepard, probably the most complex planning project in our city's history. Nancy did a masterful job negotiating with Google, with Sharks, with just about everybody. And Johnny Fan, who I'm told by Nancy has been voted MVP. It's not very often that an attorney gets the MVP vote and it says an awful lot, particularly I know about this recent agreement with Johnny, with the Sharks, that was very, involved a lot of very late nights in recent days. I want to thank everybody on the city team and I'm ashamed, I know I'm going to forget folks, but thank you for putting up with my my naming at least those of many that I know. Laurie Severino, Lee Will Cox, Nicole Burnham, Matt Kano, Jessica Zank, Jay Guevara, Lori Mitchell, John Two, Ryan Doe, Jackie Moros, Ferran and the whole housing team, Rachel Vanderveen, of course, Robert Manfred, David Keon, Eric Edlin, Jared Hart, Tim Rude, Michael Brio, Urban Planning, Elizabeth Handler, Shannon Hill, Ramses Madu, Dana Peak, John Risto, and his whole transportation team. Robert Sapien, Kristen Clements, Jose Ruano, Wilson Tan, Lori Mitchell, I'm sorry, I just said Lori, and Arianne Collin. And two other folks who have since left because of the duration of this project, of course. But I think Jim Orpaul has since come back to the city, he's helping us out, and Tammy Turnipseed. And I want to thank also on our team at the city, at the mayor's office. Kelly Klein, has just done enormous amount of heavy lifting here. Before her, the incomparable Rurikun, who I know is watching because she always watches when it's something that is important, that she cares passionately about. Jim Reed, who's deeply involved in working with community partners, Scott Karine, Nathan Ho, many others. And then, of course, I want to thank our supporters. The state of California helped get AB 900 extension through and starting with Governor Gavin Newsom, who from the first time I talked to him about this project, could do very well about it because our city team had been advocating for so long. And pro temp Tony Atkins, President Pro Temp of the Senate, who authored SB seven, so essential. Our local delegation, Assembly Member Ash Corrigan, Evan Lowe, and Senator Dave Cortese for their work. Really appreciate their effort, which has enabled us to be able to accelerate this project to what would otherwise be years of litigation. And of course, I started by thanking the community. I want to thank so many of the community members who participated, the 38 members of the SAG who worked incredibly hard through dozens of meetings. And I know those were very long meetings and I appreciate their commitment to making sure we got to the finish line with something that they would be proud of and we'd all be proud of. I want to thank the early supporters of this project who were out there communicating and hustling. The Silicon Valley Leadership Group, Vince Roach, Jason Baker, Ahmad Thomas, of course, and before Ahmad Carl Guardino. The Downtown Association, Scott Neese, who's such a great champion of this effort. SB at Home, Leslie Carcellia, Matthew Reed, who understood the extraordinary opportunity and possibility bringing affordable housing to our city. Spur, formerly Teresa Alvarado, now Fred Busso and Michael Lane, all who pushed so hard. Really appreciate their efforts. Of course, this is going to be built by thousands of people who are essential to building great, building great cities. And we have some great members of the building trades led by David Beany here. I appreciate their strong support for this project. Enrique Aragüello at the Laborers. Gene Cohen, the South Bay Labor Council pushed hard, I know. And we had a lot of help with labor and the statewide effort to get legislation over the goal line. And of course, the Equity Coalition who worked so hard in ensuring that we had a clear vision that be articulated in creating community benefits package that is I think really transformational and very impactful. All of the team members from Working Partnerships and PAC and So Much Mayfair, the Law Foundation, Sacred Heart, Silicon Valley Rising, everybody worked together. The many neighborhood leaders at Dang, Kathy Sutherland, and many others who worked collaboratively with us. And I know we've got more work to do still with them as we work through some remaining issues. And of course, the council, and I really want to thank council members, Peralas and Davis, who have been deeply engaged with the neighborhoods. With Google about every detail of this to ensure that this would be a project that their communities would be proud of as well. So thank, thanks to everyone. I appreciate your patience with my long list of thank yous. We are now going to go to community comment. I see we have 200 members of the community who are here. I suspect we're going to have a lot of comments. So with apologies, I'm going to ask that we limit community comment to a minute. We are going to need to get to a finish line by midnight. I'm confident we can get there. But I suspect with all the folks who want to speak, we're going to be here for a few hours. So thank you for your patience. And we will limit comment to just a minute. Appreciate you respecting that. Jeffrey Buchanan, thank you for all your support and work.
Mayor Council, on behalf of Working Partnerships USA, I'd like to thank the staff. I'd like to thank Google. But in particular, I'd like to thank the thousands of community members who made this landmark project possible. Particularly when it comes to the community benefits package in front of you. The community spoke up, the community organized, they took action, they dug in and they did the work to find solutions. Members of the Silicon Valley Rising Coalition have been working for four years with Google to make this happen. And we believe that the final development agreement before you really sets the example for responsible tech development going forward. Centering racial equity, community voice, and addressing community stabilization and good union jobs in a project. I dare you to find the development that does more to address the community's greatest concerns. So with that, I encourage your full support for the development agreement before you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Mary Helen Doherty.
I'm Mary Helen Doherty, PAC's housing team. Over the last four years, we've been actively engaged with community partners. Advocating for this development agreement to address the lack of affordable housing, displacement, the need for community benefits. And to acknowledge that the impact of this agreement extends far beyond the Deardong Station area. We strongly support the Community Stabilization Fund that must be grounded in racial justice and governed by grassroots leaders. Community members, particularly those from communities of color, will have authority to direct millions of dollars to prevent displacement and create economic opportunity for local residents. This governance model sets a new standard and we recommend it be utilized in the future. Your vote of approval is deeply appreciated. We have a long way to go in order to equitably serve all our residents in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Neese, welcome, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Neese, Executive Director, San Jose Downtown Association. What a long way we've come since the Good Neighbor Committee was vetting an EIR for a Major League Baseball stadium on the west side of downtown. The reason tonight feels like a celebration is because the city, Google, and the community did the work. For four years, we've worked together and it shows in the overwhelming support tonight. I'd like to give a shout out to Airport Director John Aitken, who helped with an early chess move on the OEI policy governing building heights, which contributed mightily to this project's density, massing, and ground plane. Downtown West is a model project and represents the future of big city development. One that integrates neighborhoods, nature, equity, and economic growth. Kudos to us.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for your work. Ben Leach, welcome.
Thank you, Ben Leach, Executive Director of the Preservation Action Council of San Jose. We really want to commend both the Google project team and the Planning Division staff for their comprehensive and constructive responses to PAC SJ's initial concerns about what looked to be potentially a blank slate development. We had fears that the historic resources that are embodied in this neighborhood would be overlooked. And to their credit, Google recognized that that was an asset instead of an impediment. While not all of PAC SJ's comments and recommendations have been incorporated, we are really satisfied that our input was given fair consideration and really did contribute to the improved plan that better meets the project's stated objectives to make a place that is of San Jose. And historic preservation is an integral part of that, and we thank Google for recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Catherine, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hedges. I'm a member leader with PAC and KALIS SB, and I support the Downtown West Development Agreement. And we're here today with such a strong community benefits package because Google's team listened. In response to our organization, they started working on a coalition of housing advocates, community organizations, and labor groups. It's remarkable that this would be the largest community benefits fund of its kind the region has ever seen. We're hoping that the first commitments from the community fund will support community land trust and organizing tenant legal services for eviction. Economic opportunities for communities of color face those threatened displacement. Legal tenants, legal services for tenants facing eviction are something I like to highlight because losing keeping people from losing their house while intervening with the appropriate legal offense, they proven way to combat people falling into homelessness. Again, I support the agreement, even though it's a compromise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Ruthra.
Hi, I'm Linda Ruthra from the Conservation Chair for the California Native Plant Society Santa Clara Valley Chapter. If we are to have development, I want it done the Google way. They did lots of outreach. They did lots of listening and they worked towards real solutions. I raised a concern about a mitigation they proposed. They worked on my concern, made changes, and got back to me with an individual meeting. That's the kind of outreach that works. They paid attention to respecting the riparian corridor and respecting the setbacks. They're protecting and improving four and a half, four and a quarter acres of habitat value. And they're bringing nature into the downtown area by using site-appropriate California native plants that will support birds, butterflies, and other pollinators. Being able to interact with nature will improve the health, mental functioning, and well-being of those who live, work, and recreate there. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Shiloh Ballard, welcome, Shiloh.
Hi there, Shiloh Ballard, on behalf of the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. So we at SBBC, we are excited about this plan and want to focus our comments on the transportation element of the plan. You all know the city's mode shift goals are aggressive and wonderful, 15% walking and biking and 40% SOV. And in order to achieve those goals, citywide, downtown and downtown west have to exceed those targets. That means the plan needs to completely center walking, biking, and transit use in order to carry the rest of the city. Especially those places where it's just not realistic to expect people to walk and bike and take transit. I also wanted to note that I was transit dependent for my pre-professional life. I took the bus, roller skated, and biked everywhere until I was able at the age of 24 to buy my first car. Now it is a choice for me to live life free of a car and it is a choice that makes me an incredibly happy person. Land use and affordable housing is the way we make that happiness accessible to more people. And you get to make that a reality tonight for lots of folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Shiloh, for spreading the happiness. Dave, welcome.
20 years ago, as we were in the midst of the long journey to protect Coyote Valley, our Sierra Club former chapter director Dan Kalb said that an urban downtown campus closer to transit would be better in almost every way imaginable. For water, wildlife, recreation, climate resiliency, today, we're thrilled that Coyote Valley has been protected and that an urban downtown campus, rather a community closer to transit, will be coming soon. That will be better in almost every way imaginable. Today, our state and city are aggressively combating climate change by reducing vehicle miles traveled, creating a walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented development, bringing housing and jobs together, consistent with climate smart San Jose. We expect Google will continue to listen to our concerns as they have to date. Thank you to Google city staff and everyone here for this extraordinary community building process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Marcy Gersten, welcome. Marcy, we're not able to hear you right now. It appears that you've got a, perhaps a version of software that doesn't allow you to be heard. So if you try to download the most recent version of Zoom, that should enable you to be able to speak.
Hold on.
We got you, Marcy.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, great. Sorry, sorry. Technical difficulties. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is Marcy Gersten with the PAC Housing Team, which supports the Downtown West project and the related plans. As you've heard, PAC has been involved for the past four years to ensure this project addresses concerns raised by community members about this development. In particular, I'd like to focus, well, in addition to creating much-needed affordable housing, the Development Agreement establishes the sizable Community Benefits Fund grounded in racial justice that allows community leaders to have a real say in funding solutions to help address issues of displacement, housing instability, and economic injustice. This would not have happened without Google's willingness to invest in our community, listen to the concerns of the community, and collaborate to address the concerns they heard. The process of city and staff working together should be replicated, not just some mega projects like this. PAC truly wants to make San Jose a place where we all belong. This project helps us get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Knight, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Knight. I'm the Education and Outreach Manager for the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. And I'm a resident of downtown San Jose. Audubon, together with the Sierra Club, Green Foothills, and the Santa Clara Valley Chapter of the Native Plant Society, sent a letter of support for the Google Downtown West Plan and its associated development with the city of San Jose. For decades, our organizations have advocated for the preservation of open landscapes and wildlife habitats in Santa Clara County. While at the same time promoting good urban planning that focuses density in the urban core, prevents the displacement of people and wildlife, and protects our riparian systems while integrating the native plants that we all love. Most recently, we've been able to see this work with the Google West Downtown West Project. And we're really excited to see it set an example for future developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Robert, welcome.
Oh, I wasn't sure it was me. Okay. I know that this is going to go through. There's no stopping it now. I just regret the fact that we didn't involve more unhoused people in the process and trying to get them involved. I did my best to try to bring that voice to the conversation, although I was pretty well limited. And again, I regret that we didn't have that opportunity for more people to voice their opinions and to really know about what's going on. And this passing of Laura's Law right now, I think is just another way they're going to cast a net to try to get people out of St. James Park and out of the downtown area. And I don't know if that was part of the plan, but I know Matt Mayhem was there pushing for it as well. I know Johnny Cammas has been doing it for a long time. And knowing that Google's coming in, I think that was part of the plan. And I'm very sorry that it went through the way it did without really looking at it holistically for many people. That's too bad. Well, next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Scott Mace.
Yes, Scott Mace, a resident of downtown. I support the development agreement. I would hope that as this gets I would hope that as this gets built out, the shift from single occupancy vehicles to transit will mean no more bus delay at the end of SAP Center events. I experienced this delay of nearly an hour while the parking lot was emptied. Also, I wanted to note, in the Google presentation, there was a photo of a illustration of a doors-owned bike lane. I hope that there are no doors-owned bike lanes in this project. Also, let's keep an eye on the 4,800 spaces that could be added to see if we're going to need to do additional things to discourage congestion in the downtown and move to a more livable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Weber? Okay, Sandra? All right, I think we lost Sandra. Sandra, go ahead. I think you're muted right now. If you could, there you go.
Oh, great. I see. Great, thank you. My name is Sandra Weber, and I'm a resident of Plant 51, a condo complex closest to Deardong Station and the Google's planned Downtown West Development. I sat on the SAG panel. There's an anticipation here surrounding downtown for activation, activation for growth of small businesses, for our treasured waterways, for an energy deserving one of the largest cities in America, and although the energy here is palpable after Sharks Wind or before Disney on Ice or others, event-based economic generation is not enough to garner momentum necessary to attract tourists or even locals to downtown. And as someone who used to work in guest services at the arena, most every night I was asked, so what do people do around here after the game? Google's Downtown West would change that, offering a continual flow of vibrancy as a companion to our beloved anchor that is SAP. The hours of sleepless nights from all those who poured their lives into this project are both appreciated and recognized, and we thank you, council, for this momentous consideration.
Thank you, Sandra. Bert Weaver, I know that you're one of the community leaders with DANG, and I understood that four of you wanted to speak in a particular order, but I'm not sure if that was on this item or on 10.3. I just want to confirm, Bert.
This was not going to be on order for this.
Okay, we'll call you in order then on the other one. Okay, thanks, Bert. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. So Bert Weaver, I'm a resident of Delmas Park, and I want to express thanks on behalf of myself and my wife Sarah to Google for their outreach and communication with our neighborhood as they develop this massive project. They came to us very early in the process to get our feedback, and they maintain communication with us throughout. And we're looking forward to welcoming our new neighbors to Delmas Park. And of course, we urge council to accept the Development Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Kathy, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. My name is Kathy Sutherland, and I'm a 40-year resident of Delmas Park and a member of the DANG. On behalf of the DANG, we would like to thank Mayor Liccardo and council members Davis and Peralas for your leadership. Thank you for getting to this point where we can enthusiastically support and welcome Google to our neighborhoods. We'd also like to give a shout out to Nancy Klein for her understanding and support. And Google, thank you for listening, for caring about our concerns, for the open door and the numerous conversations. We look forward to a long and positive relationship. Google, your outreach and engagement with the DANG has created a level of trust that we didn't expect to feel. Thank you. We know that there will be bumps in the road, but we are confident that we have a partner who respects our neighborhoods and who will listen with an open mind to our concerns. We look forward to a long relationship to bringing this exciting new development to San Jose.
Thank you, Kathy. Mary Pizzo, welcome, Mary.
Hi. I want to, as a member of DANG, I want to thank Google and the city staff for practicing active listening to the concerns from the surrounding neighborhoods. Specifically, we are grateful for the early funding that will be allocated to the Gardener Community Center. We support the Google Development Project and look forward to improvements along Bird Avenue, leading to the Gardener Community Center, Gardener Academy, and Google's Downtown Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Edward, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Liccardo, council members. My name is Edward Sound. I'm the Planning and Land Use Director for the Chastehangete Park Neighborhood Association, the Neighborhood SAG Representative, outgoing Chair of the City's Historic Landmarks Commission, and a member of DANG. The Downtown West Design Standards, Infrastructure Fees, and Community Outreach should set the standard for development in the Deardong Station area and beyond. I appreciate Google's clear willingness to work with neighbors up to this point, and I believe that we've laid the groundwork to create a long-term, positive working relationship with all area stakeholders. I strongly endorse the memo from the Mayor and Council Members Davis and Peralas regarding the community center and gardener and parks adjacent to the Downtown West. Garden Community Center has been underfunded and underutilized for years, yet it hosted one of the first community meetings for Google's proposal, and a picture of that meeting was actually used in staff's presentation. I asked that the council approve the memo as part of the Downtown West Mixed-Use Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Perry, welcome. Perry, your device appears to be muted. Push the unmute button. There you go.
Yes, I am Perry, chemical engineer, and I would like to know San Jose City and Santa Clara County residents, what are the protections for local residents, local county residents, instead of Ivy League universities in east coast or southern California taking up the jobs? Are there any protections reserved for local city and local county residents?
Thank you, Perry. Mikhail, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mikhail. I have been a North Willow Glen resident for the last 11 years, and I have been living in the next Downtown West area. It was a place for great memories. I used to drive and park there, take couching from there, but mainly bike there on my daily commute to or to work or game or concert. For several years, actually, used a bike trailer to get my kids to daycare in Little Italy and feed the ducks on the way. But that was also a place of some bad memories as well. It was where my friend and coworker was hit by a car while biking at that very same overcrossing on Garden 280, which Downtown West Project is planning to improve. Therefore, I'm excited to see the Downtown West Project, which can finally make Downtown West a modern and safer central, as it should be. And as a part of the local team with Silicon Valley Bike Challenge, I would like to thank the city and the Google team and voice my full support for this project.
Thank you. Ron Golem, I neglected to thank VTA for your partnership. We know you're an essential stakeholder and partner in everything we're doing in Downtown West, so thank you very much for your work.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd just like to speak on behalf of ET and our support for the Downtown West application. As many know, VT and Google have entered into a public-private partnership agreement, and that agreement is in fact a requirement for VT to obtain the federal funding that is necessary for the BAR Phase II construction to start, so service begins by 2030. And as part of that agreement, the entitlements for transit-oriented development above the Deardong Bar Station are part of the Downtown West application. I just want to note what an extraordinary opportunity this is to have a transit extension occurring in conjunction with such a major amount of development, and even more so that Google has taken a transit-oriented community approach that really represents where cities need to evolve, how they can accommodate growth and meat in the 21st century. It's a great model, and we look forward to working with the city and other properties to extend that model to other bar stations. So to sum up, I just want to commend Google for its comprehensive and holistic approach to planning, addressing key issues, and creating a better model for community planning. We support the project and look forward to working with the city and Google. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Sandy Perry?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sandy Perry from Affordable Housing Network, and we kind of hate to interrupt all the victory laps, but we continue to oppose this project, and we're asking the council to vote no tonight. Homelessness has increased 42% since this project was first brought to the city in 2017. The increase in property values lead to an increase in rents, which lead to homelessness and displacement and make the crisis worse. This is not okay. Last year, Google made $40 billion in profit. They've had tens of billions of dollars of Trump tax cuts, and for this amount of misery to continue to exist in our city with this amount of wealth is unacceptable. However, in case you don't listen to us, we support the Deardong Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, the Collaborative Court, Just Cause and Duplexes, and the allocation for tenant education outreach eviction protection, and the CLT. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Vince Rocha, welcome, Vince.
Well, I'll keep it short and just say, you know, from the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, we fully support this project, and I just want to second all the positive comments tonight. It really shows the community does win with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Luna?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome. Welcome. Oh, I think we lost you. There you go. Could you unmute your device? Then we'll be able to hear you. Sure, I believe your device is still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
All right. So, sorry about that. So my name is Gabriel Manrique. I'm a community organizer with Luna, and I support a Downtown West Agreement. I'm glad that the people in power have listened to our communities for years of organizing to come out with this agreement. As we all know, our working-class families are struggling to have a decent life in San Jose, especially when it comes to housing. It is remarkable that this will be the largest community benefit fund of its kind the region has ever seen. A community land trust is an especially exciting opportunity for our city. It provides a pathway for working people and communities of color to have collective ownership over a piece of the city, a chance to put down long-term roots. Also, I would like for the city council to address the recommendations of the plan related to further exploration of crucial tenant protections and expansion of these protections to duplexes. It is our duty as a city to explore all strategies geared towards fighting displacement. Let's keep working to prevent displacement and improve the life of the working-class families in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Snyder, welcome.
Thank you. Oops, this is just.
Sorry.
No problem. I should have gotten my name right. I ought to be better at Zoom yet already. I've been living in San Jose for over 20 years. I own a house in the Garden Alameda, just outside of the Google Village, and I'm really excited for this. Please vote for this. It'll be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Say hi to Kelly. Alice Kaufman?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Alice Kaufman, Legislative Advocacy Director for Green Foothills. And I'll keep this brief. I think Linda Ruthref, Dave Bichon, Carolyn Knight already said a lot of what I was planning to say. Obviously, we support the project, and I think, I just want to say, I really hope that this can be a model for what other developers can do in the future. Bringing in nature into your project is actually not any harder than bringing in non-native plants and traditional landscaping. It can be done. So take a lesson from Google and learn how to make all the environmentalists happy. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Adina Levin? Hi, Adina. It looks like your device is still muted. There you go.
Thank you very much. Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain. Glad to be supporting this project and the downtown plan. How the combination of the development and the city's plans and the city's policies and the region's transit as well all converge to make a place that people will be able to live and work and enjoy with a lot less driving. And so really glad to hear all of the great work that has come together, and so please do pass this project and plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Brian Prescott?
Hi. For the record, my name is Brian Prescott. I'll make this quick. I'm just asking you to support this project. I think it's really great. I think putting a ton of jobs and homes on top of a train station is absolutely the best thing we can do to achieve our climate goals. And besides that, it's just going to make Deardong a cooler place right now. Deardong is where I go to leave San Jose, and with projects like these, I look forward to Deardong becoming a place where I bring my friends to San Jose. So thanks a lot. Respectfully ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Doug Tesher?
Speak.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Big council members and big council members. I'm a field representative with Carpenter's Local 405, and on behalf of roughly 7,700 members here in Santa Clara, I'm here to ask that you support Google's Downtown West Development. Through a collaborative and equitable process with the city and community, Google has proposed a project that has reimagined Deardong Station area. From affordable to workforce housing with ample open space, walkable retail, and easy access to transit, Google has made a commitment to this community, and that is not the only commitment. By partnering with responsible union contractors, Google is making an investment in the future of San Jose, one that will create thousands of good-paying union jobs, one that will provide an opportunity for local apprentices, including women, minorities, and disadvantaged youth, to begin a career in the construction industry, with livable wages, healthcare, and retirement benefits, not to mention build tomorrow's skilled labor workforce. This will allow for members to live and work within their own community, not have to make long commutes to get to work. Google has proposed a development that is outlined fits all the goals of the Deardong Area Plan, and in conjunction with community and local labor, will bring forth a project that San Jose will be proud of for years to come, and should be a model for development throughout the state, if not the nation. Thank you, Google, council, and staff.
Thank you. Victor Vasquez?
Good evening. My name is Victor Vasquez. I work at some of Mayfair, Director of Community Organization Policy. Want to make sure, we also thank all the community organizers and community leaders, and we're here because we know this plan is not perfect, but we support the community governance and community benefits items for the reasons we stated before. Over $150 million control buying for the community for housing and economic empowerment, and we also are supportive of the initial $3 million funding that will go into tenant protections. Our community is heavily impacted by potential mass eviction, so we're supportive of that, and we're also supportive of elements and recommendations that would expand tenant protections to duplexes. Lastly, I would like to consider that additional $22 million of unallocated funds go back to East San Jose for alternative community ownership models, and let's continue to pass TOPA and COPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Globus?
Good evening, Mayor Liccardo and City Council. My name is Ryan Globus. I'm a resident of D6 near Cahill Park. First, I'd like to say, this is my first time speaking at a city council meeting. It'd be great if you had a list of like the next 10 speakers. There's 200 speakers. I don't know when I'm going to be up, and I really have to go to the bathroom. But, sorry, going back to the item, please support this project in addition to all the affordable housing it'll provide and the great destinations and jobs near transit, which is essential for fighting climate change. It'll really bridge the gap between this neighborhood and downtown. So I'm talking about where I live and near Cahill Park and Alameda, St. Leo's, you know, the Rose Garden. You know, when I bike or take transit to downtown, the area currently is a lot of like empty parking lots and warehouses, and it's kind of desolate and depressing, and we feel very alone, and so this will revitalize the area, and so please support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm having problems with the device. Sarah McDermott, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Sarah McDermott. I am the Political Director of Unite Here Local 19, the Hospitality Workers Union in Silicon Valley, and I was able to serve on the SAG. This has been an amazing four-year process. The word journey is right. I've been outside with signs about this, and I've been inside listening to public comments. I think what we have is an amazing agreement that really reflects that the organizing that the community did over the past four years has really been listened to, and I want to commend Google for listening and for really making sure that the people that work on building their campus and work in their future and work in their future campus are going to be able to stay in San Jose and build a future for their families here. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'd like to start by thanking Google and the City of San Jose for the opportunity to participate in the first phase of this extraordinary journey. But I now look forward to the next chapter in our partnership where we will invest a portion of our community benefits to unlock hundreds of additional benefits, hundreds of millions of dollars of additional benefits, starting with the integration of our historic depot landmark, the PG&E substation, and the future airport connector station into the fabric of Downtown West. Thank you, and may God bless Google and the City of San Jose.
Thank you. Kiomi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Kiomi. I'm a meddling house and policy attorney with the Law Foundation and a member of the SAG. The Law Foundation strongly supports this project, particularly due to the unique and important Community Stabilization Fund. We're proud to have worked in solidarity with other community organizations and partners that advocated to ensure that Google's arrival benefited all San Joseans. This groundbreaking fund adds stability to those most at risk of displacement and supports economic opportunity for all people in San Jose. It sets the new bar for future development agreements as it's governed by community members, including those with lived experience that will center race equity in its decisions. We hope it inspires companies to reconsider their social responsibility and prioritize anti-displacement measures that support communities of colors' abilities to continue to live and thrive in Silicon Valley. We thank the city and Google for their collaboration, and we look forward to working together for more outcomes like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Cecilia Herrera, and I work for three cafes at Google in Sunnyvale. I am proud to be a member of Unite Here Local 19 and a resident of the East Side. Having a union job at Google has made a huge difference in my life because I have a job security and health coverage for my family. This has been especially important during the pandemic. As a cafeteria worker and as a member of the San Jose community, I am pleased to see that Google has made commitments to affordable housing, quality jobs, and to a fund for a community. This project sets a new model for how tech development can keep families' health and promote quality services and a secure job for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Graciela, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cecilia Herrera, and I'm a member of Unite Here Local 19. I have been a hotel worker in San Jose for 25 years. When we first heard about the Google project, we had some concerns about how it could impact the community. But I'm glad to see that Google and the city have listened to us. I appreciate that Google has made commitments to affordable housing and quality jobs. They will allow me and me and my fellow hospitality workers to stay in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Graciela. Jose Barba, welcome, Jose.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, how are you? Thank you, Sam, and the City Council. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Jose Barba, and I am living in San Jose, downtown neighborhood. I am so proud to be a member of Unite Here Local 19. I have lived in San Jose for over 35 years, and I care about this community. Throughout this pandemic, I have volunteered for food line three days a week and by seeing clinics. Hotel workers have been sharing our hopes with this project, the science that was first announced. I am very proud that Google has listened. This project will be bringing more opportunities to quality a job for thousands of professionals and server workers. I love San Jose, and I am so glad that Google has listened our to community informing these agreements. Thank you so much, Sam and City Council, for the time.
Thank you, Jose. Kelly Fallon?
Hello, my name is Kelly Fallon. I'm a Senior Policy Manager at the Bay Area Council, which is a regional public policy organization representing over 350 members of the Bay Area Business Committee, and we strongly support the Downtown West development. I echo all of the supportive comments we've heard tonight, but want to highlight how transformational this development will be for San Jose's job housing balance by providing 7.3 million square feet of office space as well as over 5,000 units of housing. Downtown West will create a job center directly adjacent to housing and transit. This is a massive opportunity for economic and community development that should not be missed, and I ask that you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if Vice Mayor Jones could please call the next speakers. I'm having a little problem with my device. Oh. Rian Noel? Please forgive me. I'm sorry, Jappy. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Maria Noa Fernandez with Silicon Valley Rising. And four years ago, when little was known about what Google coming to San Jose would mean, thousands of workers and their families, organizers, activists, neighbors, we all came together to share what vision they we have for this project. From our first meeting on the east side at the Mexican Heritage Plaza, where we overflied into the plaza to the countless rallies, committee meetings, door knocking, phone banking, people showed up time and time again. They shared their worries, they shared their vision. And after years of work, to the credit of Google and the City of San Jose, the team listened. What we have now is a model for developing the region across the country. What we have now is a model for partnership, a different kind of process with Google listening and working with community groups and labor to co-develop solutions to the community's biggest concerns, the need for good jobs and to prevent displacement. I am proud of the work of so many in this community and strongly support the Mayor and Council move forward with this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Tim Bobian?
Tim Bobian, representing the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. Score is supportive of the staff-recommended development agreement with Google, which we believe creates a model for transit-oriented development and urban spaces moving forward. We applaud the 4,000 desperately needed housing units included in the proposal, 25% of which will be affordable. We highlight the importance of these affordable units as the proper supply approach to allow our entire community to live in and enjoy this new urban hub. However, we do have some concerns with the accompanying Dyradon Station Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. We do appreciate staff clarifying timelines and additional approval for several recommendations in the supplemental memo. Though we do still have large concerns about some of the policies themselves, we will strongly oppose a final Dyradon Station housing plan with any stricter rent control or tenant protections. These stricter regulations only erode property rights and force mom-and-pop housing providers to remove naturally affordable housing units from the market. We look forward to being a part of the outreach process to create anti-displacement policies that supports the whole community.
Thank you, Tim. Joe Price?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Joe Price. I'm VP of Real Estate and Operations for Life Moves. And as one of Silicon Valley's largest providers of homeless shelter and services, we see tears every day, tears of sadness, tears of despair, tears of grit and hard work, and tears of joy. So I understand Nancy's tears. The four-year journey of this extraordinary project is not lost on me. And we applaud the City of San Jose for undertaking such a bold project and working with Google to create the vision of this transformative project that's a model for the rest of the world. We appreciate your leadership. It's a shining example of public-private partnership. And we look forward to continuing our long-term partnership with Google and the city to address the immediate needs of our vulnerable populations and that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. David Meyer? Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. David Meyer from Silicon Valley at home. Tonight, we'd like to express our strong support for the Downtown West proposal. Want to commend Council staff at Google for developing this vision, which is going to help transform the Dyradon Station area, especially excited by the 4,000 new homes, including this development of which 1,000 will be de-restricted affordable, which will catalyze housing development across the station area. Thank you to the Council for setting the bar high with that 25% affordability goal. We appreciate Google's taken care to actually make sure there'd be available resources to finance these affordable housing developments. I think the first parcel that's going to be dedicated would be an excellent opportunity to leverage Measure A funding. Also want to commend the $154.8 million Community Stabilization Fund, which will help support the city's efforts to counter displacement pressures citywide. So overall, very supportive of this. Thank you very much to everyone for all their hard work.
Thank you. Gavin, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Gavin Morian. I'm the Development Manager for Talai's FC. I want to thank the City Council for your hard work on this project and the staff on considering our perspective on Downtown West. Google has worked closely with Talai's FC and our Project Advocacy Committee over the last year and a half to get input and provide updates on Downtown West. Our members are very excited about this vibrant mixed neighborhood with activated ground floors and extensive network of public open spaces. Downtown West will bring numerous homes and jobs to transit-oriented sites. The development agreement is a pioneering agreement that will really provide funds to the community. We would like to advocate for some of the additional money, community investment money used for transit passes for contact workers and residents. And we did have some concern about the ability to build 800 affordable homes on less than three acres. But in general, we're very excited about this and look forward to seeing it approved.
Thank you. Resenda Lopez? Resenda? Your device appears to be muted. Tiene que premiar el botón de mute, de mudar. Resenda, you need to push the mute button? Okay. Resenda, I hope you raise your hand if you're able to get your device working. We'll take you again. Person with call-in user number one?
Awesome. Yeah, well, it looks like it's going to be a good plan. I just hope that it doesn't take years to build, that there's going to be enough electricity and water. You know, we have an infrastructure problem here in California. It's not that good statewide. A lot of power outages, all these, I mean, we're paying, you know, high premium for utilities, and the tax on the utilities is high. Now they're going to be building all these new things, and it's going to take a lot of energy to do that. And once the people are there, there'll be a lot of energy. I'd like to see what kind of elaboration they have about, you know, energy-saving buildings, et cetera. I hope that Valley Transit uses buses versus light rail. I think light rail should be scrapped. They use buses for this area. I think it would be really cool, be like, you know, I use the buses a lot when I was overseas in Europe. I mean, in a complicated city like Rome, they use buses. I wish San Jose would, but light.
Thank you. James Rodriguez? Hi, James. You'll need to unmute your device. Appears to be muted right now. I just need to push. There you go.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Liccardo and Council members. My name is James Rodriguez. I'm a representative from Carpenters Local Union 405 in Santa Clara County. In addition to being a representative, I'm a third-generation carpenter who has firsthandly seen and benefited from all that the Carpenters Union has to offer, including a livable wage that has allowed me to continue to live and work here. I'm speaking on behalf of 39,000 carpenter men and women, just like myself, all across Northern California. I'm here speaking in support of the project that will potentially see hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of work hours for those very men and women, a number of whom live right here in the city. These are workers at varying points in their careers, journey-level workers, continuing to learn and advance their skills and elevate the trade as they work toward a respectable retirement, apprentices building a career for themselves through an accredited apprenticeship program, and veterans reintegrating into civilian life and work through our Home and Star Health Program, all making a livable wage with medical and retirement benefits that allows them and their families to live in the communities they work in, which also means money reinvested back into the local community.
Okay. Maria Lomelli? Maria? Welcome, Maria. We need to push the mute button. Microphone's located.
Me escuchan?
Sí.
Sí?
Pues sí, gracias.
Si me escuchan?
Hi, this is Toni Taylor, City Clerk. Before she begins, I need the interpreters to be prepared.
Yes, can I? Can you hear me now? Toni, can you hear me on this? Can you hear me on the English channel now?
We'll be on the English channel. So for those of you in the Zoom program, please click on Interpretation, select English, and you'll be able to hear the interpreter.
Okay, okay, great. Maria, gracias por esperar. Sí, por favor.
Okay. Hola, mi nombre es Buenas noches.
My name is Maria Lomelli, and I'm a member of Luna, and I support the Downtown West project. The Downtown Community Fund is $150 is going to put into the community leaders of San Jose, and we have reached this big achievement. We have the hope that the first commitments of the Community Fund will support will support some projects like the anti-displacement legal fees to help the immigrants and the workers of low income don't lose their housing, even though the landlords without scruples want to take advantage of them. And also the council members to control these elements as the plan is permitted.
Era un proceso público.
There's an open, public process for major dialogue and more equity.
Jeremiah, welcome. Jeremiah, your device appears to be muted right now. Just push the unmute button there, the microphone. There you go. We can hear you now, Jeremiah.
Oh, you can hear me? Okay. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Jeremiah Long. I'm a member of Carpenters Local 9144. I live in Midtown area of San Jose. Today, I'm speaking in favor of the Google Downtown Project. Project will allow a union carpenter like me and other skilled tradesmen to continue to work and live in the City of San Jose for many years to come. It is also important to allow companies like Google to expand in San Jose. As you all well know, we have been losing tech industry companies to places like Austin, Miami, Denver, and Portland in recent years. It is vital for our economic survival that we create a business-friendly environment here in the City of San Jose. I fully support the Google Downtown West project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Daniel? Daniel Philippe?
Hi, my name is Daniel Philip. I'm a longtime Nagley Park and Rose Garden resident, a member of the San Jose B-Pac, a Google employee, and a member of the local jazz trio, The Jazz Mechanics. We have an obligation to our children and grandchildren to provide climate to provide climate-smart workplaces. Otherwise, Silicon Valley will continue building the standard environmentally detrimental and sprawling workplaces that will make our freeways and roads even worse, if that's even possible. This project also is in particular given thoughtful consideration to bike lanes so that people can safely and emissions-free get to work. While building out this project, please consider adding a lot of secure bike parking because I predict you will see a lot of bikes in the downtown area and this new corridor. And besides providing just office space near a train station, it creates a center of culture, which is essential to any vibrant community. For these reasons, and all those stated by the previous speakers, I wholeheartedly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Ana Rodriguez? Welcome, Ana.
Oh, hi, good evening. My name is Ana Rodriguez, and I am employee at Google Montevideo Campus. I am a member of a union here local 19 also. Having a good union job has been so important to my family, especially during this situation that is Having a good union job has been so important to my family, especially during this, um, this situation that is the pandemic. I'm glad to see that not only has Google commitment to the community benefits like affordable houses, housing, I'm sorry, but they have made commitments to quality jobs for the people building and operating this future campus. As a civil worker, I cannot overstate that difference this will make in the lives of working people. So thank you so much to everyone who has listened to service workers throughout, throughout this process. It is clear that our voices were heard. I am so excited to see this project move forward. So thank you so much and God bless you to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ana. Happy Delgado.
Yes, uh, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I am in favor of this, uh, very exciting project. I'm part of the local carpenters four oh five. I think this will be a great, great project for me to keep my career going. I really appreciate it. I thank you and I'm fully in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Roberto Aguirre.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Roberto Aguirre. I'm a member of the Drywall Natter's local union 9144 since 2015. Also a resident of San Jose and I'm full supporter of Google's downtown west project. I believe this will bring big job opportunity for the carpenters. Uh, we would like to continue living in San Jose and this will provide me with the necessity benefits and income for the, for my family and myself. Um, I'm full supporter of this project and currently ask the city council approve it as this project will provide other carpenters within this trade like myself, the ability to continue their careers and work towards retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto.
AJ, welcome. AJ. Uh, Henry appears to be a problem.
Hey, mayor, sorry. I just got out of the meeting. I'm just out.
Get you back in. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi AJ, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, as a San Jose homeowner for the last 15 years and a Bay Area resident for over 40, I'm somewhat saddened and frustrated to see the San Jose city council all but ignore the San Jose Sharks, their fans and all they've brought to San Jose since 1993, uh, when most of downtown San Jose was a dilapidated ghost town. Uh, make no mistakes. I'm not against the development of downtown, but not at the cost of the Sharks. Uh, the Sharks and SAP Center need to be included in the development rather than an afterthought that requires last second negotiation. I also find it odd to see images of creeks featured in several of the development markups, considering the vast amount of San Jose creeks today are either being destroyed by the large homeless population or simply used as a dump, no matter how much San Jose residents call for action. Uh, I find it misleading that all the plans brought forward assume the Sharks have released their controlled parking lots, which from what I know, they still have not done. Uh, while Mayor Licardo has stated publicly that no part of the development will threaten the team's tenure, the Sharks have already said that the current plan does in fact threaten the viability of SAP Center. Uh, I am for this development, but not at the cost of the Sharks. It's time for action and thousands of fans do not have options other than their personal vehicles to get to downtown. You must make sure they have close parking and access to SAP Center.
Thank you, AJ. Reverend Swilly.
Mute. Okay. Uh, as a representative for the small diverse business community here in San Jose, I think on the SAG committee, I'm impressed with how Google let, let their ear to the community. And I love the idea of this being an open campus, not like that spaceship that landed in the, in Cupertino, Cupertino, uh, that, that we hope that the small businesses and the community, uh, are completely integrated from commerce to our access to the restaurants and all. And I think that this can be a great asset to our city. Uh, I do appreciate how the, the city council and, and everybody worked with the community and, and Linda and, and I expect this to be a very good thing as San Jose is growing up, you know? I think San Jose as a city of a million people should have a more vibrant downtown. And I think this is a good start. I think this was a well, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, original. Justin Wayne. Justin, your device is still muted. We're not able to hear you. Justin, could you please push the microphone icon on your computer and enable us to hear you? John Davis. Welcome, John. Could you please unmute your device? We're not able to hear you yet. John, could you please push the microphone icon to unmute your device? There you go. We can hear you now.
This is actually Christine Davis.
Hi, Christine.
Speaking on behalf of both of us. Sorry about that. Thank you, council and thank you, mayor. I'm, John and I are 37 year residents of Nagley Park in downtown San Jose. And so we have waited a long time to see such an amazing project happen. Great cities do great things and downtown west is a great thing for San Jose. It's a project that's transformational, as many have stated before, I won't go through all that, but it's also in harmony with the needs of the neighborhoods and nature. And that's real important to this family. It's real important to the downtown residents of San Jose. It's a unique opportunity for the economic growth and the future of San Jose. I don't think that there's been anyone that has been more committed than Google to the community outreach and has been selfless in that approach. They have continually looked outward and not inward to solve and to try to help so many different areas of San Jose's needs and its residents. They came in to enrich the quality of life for all, not just for tech jobs. And I've heard that so many times. It is all the supporting jobs, the restaurants, the dry cleaners, et cetera, et cetera, right on down the road that is so important to this project, small businesses. I fully support the vision and the thoughtful engagement of the financial commitment to better the future for San Jose. Google has really gone, uh, over and beyond.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Christine. Ronald Robinson. Ronald, uh, appears your device is still muted. If you could push the microphone button. There you go.
I'm muted right there. Thank you. Hello, my name is Ronald Robinson. I'm a union electrician apprentice with the IBW 332 of the Silicon Valley. I was born and raised here in San Jose from a low income, middle class family that's been here for 40 plus years. Right now I'm actually working at the, uh, Google Charleston project and have been there, uh, been able to work there to make a great living ways for the tough times for my family right now. I love my city. I've helped build my city. I volunteered for my city. This is an opportunity of a lifetime. I've been thankful. I've been grateful for the union trades all throughout the, uh, Bay Area counties here to be able to build projects like this. This is an opportunity of a lifetime. I've been so thankful that, uh, we've been able to gain a partnership within counties and cities and everybody else. So I highly support, support this project. And I'm, I'm very looking forward to it and I, I wish this would pass so I can be able to build the opportunity for my family going forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronald. Corey Smith, welcome.
Good evening, Corey Smith, on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition and strong support. Uh, we want to thank and congratulate everybody who has gotten the proposal to, to this point. We shared our, uh, letter of support along with a petition that we co-hosted with the Bay Area Council, Downtown Association Leadership Group and South Bay YMB. That petition now has more than 300 signers, roughly 75, 80% are San Jose residents, reflecting what you're hearing tonight. Strong support from the community. Uh, I do want to read a couple of the comments. Nikki is a San Jose resident and homeowner that is fully support and asks that you commit to the project. Max is a former San Jose resident who would love to move back in the comfort of a mixed use neighborhood. And I liked Michael specifically says that this will bring San Jose to the forefront of cities globally that will lead on the new economy, improve cities and companies can work together to improve the lives of all people. Congratulations all and thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Jewel Buchanan, welcome. Jewel, your device appears, there you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, this is Jewel Buchanan. I'm a resident of District Five. I'm also neighborhood commissioner for District Five, member of Aruba, Somos Mayfair and Vecinos activeos. Thank you, mayor, Google council members and community leaders for this project that will bring affordable housing, good jobs and address displacement head on. Google has made a commitment to the city. I think that's great. This agreement with Google is critical as it will provide our community with millions of dollars of funding while also putting this funding in the hands of grassroots leaders of color and creating, um, economic opportunities for all. It will be really awesome if Google could collaborate with developers, specifically those coming into District Five in the Alamo Corridor to encourage developers to have an active community partnership throughout their development. Google's project should really set the bar for all developers coming into the city. Thank you very much.
Jacob, welcome.
How you doing, sir? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, Jacob.
Uh, my name is Jacob. I'm an apprentice and a member of the carpenters local four oh five. I'm speaking in favor of the Google downtown project because this project will give the unions like work and it'll provide the training opportunities. I need to advance my career as a carpenter and become a journeyman. It'll provide work for myself and my family and it'll give me the necessary benefits and pay to be able to live out here. I mean, I'm a San Jose resident. I've lived here my whole life, so I'm going to continue living here and enjoy the Google campus till they get passed. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this, uh, meeting.
Thank you, Jacob. Uh, Alex Shor, thank you to you and Catalyzeth SV for your work and, and helping outreach the community. Alex, I think you just muted again.
Thanks, Mayor Licardo. What a fantastic example of incredible community engagement is done. This is the model by which other projects should follow to all the development community. When you engage the community, incorporate their ideas and allow them an opportunity to impact decisions, you will have a bevy of supporters like you see here tonight. So we think this is a fantastic model. And our members are really excited about this project. Definitely want to see it approved tonight. We do want to check back in. Nancy talked about the $22 million and said there didn't have to be a decision on that amount tonight. We, as our other member Gavin said, tonight would like to see some of the funding go toward transit passes to address what Jessica with the Department of Transportation talked is the important need of getting folks out of cars. So we, we would like to see transit passes for residents, Google workers and contractors. Hope you'll consider that tonight.
Thank you. Resenda Lopez. Welcome, Resendo. Hello, Resendo. We can hear you, but it's very faint. I stop you for a moment and ask you to turn off the device that you're not speaking into because having two devices means we can't hear you because there'll be an echo. There you go. Yeah, we can hear you now, Resendo. We hope. Oh. Resendo. Son, do you want to try that again? Huh? Resendo, tiene que premiar el botón de, de microfonic, the. Microfono. There you go.
Yeah. Okay.
Resendo. We can hear something there. Go ahead. Beamanino, Resendo. Okay. Resendo, we can hear you now if you'd like to speak. Well, they must, oh, we're late. Okay. All right. We're gonna, I think we lost Resendo. So they're, welcome. Chava, your device is still muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Hi, Chava Bustamante with Latinos United Foreign America. I'm, I'm calling in support of the downtown west development agreement. Uh, you know, we're here today with such a strong community benefits package because Google's team really listened. In response to our organizing, they started working with our coalition of housing advocates, community organizations and labor groups. Once again, it's been demonstrated that when community members work together in a common struggle, they are able to draw attention to unacceptable conditions and seek out resources and realize their rights in a way that benefit them and their neighbors. One of the most exciting aspects of this agreement is, uh, the fact that it puts real decision-making power in the hands of grassroots leaders in regards to how the 150 million dollar fund will be used. This project sets a new model for how tech and other developments can keep family's house and lift the quality of blue collar jobs. I only wish that the owners of the Veriza Free Market would follow the example of Google and take action to prevent the displacement of the hundreds of vendors who work so hard to make a living in a market. But that is another story. I support this agreement because it offers some promising opportunities for San Jose and I look forward to seeing how it continues to unfold. Thank you.
Thank you, Chava. Nicholas Mendiola.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Here.
Good evening, Mayor Licardo and fellow council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Nicholas Mendiola. I am 22 years old, San Jose resident and also a fourth period apprentice of carpenters locals four oh five. I'm speaking in favor of Google's downtown west project. This project will provide me with an opportunity to learn carpentry skills alongside journeyman that have had experience for many years while advancing my career to become a journeyman carpenter. It will also provide me with much needed benefits and will help me continue my career as a carpenter worker towards a retirement. This project will also provide me with the livable income, helping my fiance and I to one day buy a house of our own and be a better living environment. I am in full support of Google's downtown west project and ask that you pass and allow them the opportunity to have the union carpenters build this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Justin Wayne.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. Uh, as I'm sure you've gathered by now, dense infill development near transit is both quite popular and the right thing to do. We know that promoting climate smart development creates thriving resilient neighborhoods. Moreover, focusing development within the urban footprint is key to relieve sprawl pressure from our natural and working lands that provide countless climate benefits for our region. This is crucial as we, as we face increasingly severe climate hazards like flooding, wildfires, drought, sea level rise and extreme heat, all of which disproportionately impact our frontline communities. Over the years, San Jose has already undergone the process of bold visioning that aims to address the shared needs of housing, airport serving retail, jobs, nature and open space with projects like climate smart San Jose and San Jose green vision. For you tonight is the potential to continue down this bold, sustainable, innovative path by again supporting dense, dense infill housing near transit like downtown west. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Pat, welcome.
Hi, I'm a native, uh, San Jose resident, born and raised in San Jose and I left for 20 years and went off to different. Hi, I'm a native San Jose resident, born and raised in San Jose and I left for 20 years and went off to different urban cities. More with higher walking scores and I have to say, I never thought in my life that I ever want to move back to San Jose. Because San Jose just wasn't cool from the 18 year old that left San Jose and coming back all these years later, I have to say that there's a lot more happening here than I realized and really thriving. You know, culture and arts and I see such amazing potential for San Jose and I'm very excited and just honestly, I wasn't even planning to raise my hand, but just listening to all the different speakers. Express their enthusiasm for this project just really pumps me up and I just love, we live right on the Alameda in San Jose. So we're really close to the project and I'm just so excited for this and for the future of San Jose. So definitely a big enthusiastic support from us here on the Alameda, thank you.
Thank you Pat, we're gonna need your help to make it cool. Alright Myra Pelagio.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can Myra.
Okay, great. Hi everyone, good to start this, good evening, my name is Myra Pelagio and I work with Luna Latinos United Foreign America. And I support the Downtown West Development Agreement. We are here today with such a strong community benefits package because Google's teams listened. In response to our organizing, they started working with our coalition of housing advocates, community organizations and labor groups. I appreciate how Google's commitments would lead to at least 2,000 new affordable homes in San Jose. The most of any project in the city's history. This includes a commitment to help support the construction of roughly 1,500 affordable homes. Ensuring 25% of housing in the project is affordable. Our community is hopeful that the first commitments from the community funds support a community land trust. Tenant organizing, legal services for tenants facing eviction and economic opportunities for communities of color who are facing the threat of displacement. Specifically at R.
Myra, we just lost you. Myra, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. So I was saying, our community is hopeful that the first commitment from the community fund will support a community land trust. Tenant organizing, legal services for tenants facing eviction and economic opportunities for our communities of color who are facing the threat of displacement. And thank you for, thankful for this project and I hope you approve it, thank you.
We have just a few speakers left, so if you haven't spoken, you want to speak, this is the opportunity. Humberto Nava.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, welcome.
Good afternoon Mayor Liccardo, council staff, my name is Humberto Nava and I'm a San Jose resident and member of Drawwell Latters Local 9144 here in San Jose. And I would like to thank for allowing me to just speak on behalf of this great project. The Downtown West project is not only bringing many great community benefits, it's also bringing good paying construction jobs to provide laborable wages. And benefits for people like me that live right here in San Jose. While also allowing the money to stay here in the community benefiting our local economy and our local businesses. Of course, I was there at home for the last 25 years and I'm excited to see the project like this coming to San Jose. Which will enhance the vibrancy of downtown and will also provide the most needed affordable housing for our underserved community now to count the many jobs. That will be created permanently. I urge you to allow this project to move forward. With a project like this, many members of our community can go back to work after devastating impact of the pandemic. And help rebuild our local economy and help us rebuild our community with confidence that we're going to have our job, our jobs to go back to. And thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you, Perry, welcome. Hi Perry. I think we lost Perry, alright, Mr. Beekman.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman here. I really liked the words of Jeffrey Buchanan, Mary Ann Doorty, I think her name is, and Robert Gary tonight. You know, a lot of things have been said tonight, I just hope we can consider the ideas of responsibility. And the responsibility with technology we're all investing in with this project. And we simply owe it to ourselves as Silicon Valley to know how to practice good technology practice in our future. They're going, Google is a national security state, we have to offer the responsibility for that national security state, how are we gonna do that? Open public policies are obviously a good way to do that. You know, affordable housing ideas, you have some beginning good ideas, we have to really keep up the effort to consider ELI, VLI and mixed income. Those are going to be incredibly important concepts in the next 10 years and there's gonna have to be much more effort.
Thank you, Dean Daly.
Thank you Mayor, council and all the good workers of the city. Overall, I commend the great work that's gonna be done to revolutionize and revitalize the core of San Jose. My concern is, and I'm raising my questions about the Deeredon Housing Proposal to extend rent control and just cause the two duplexes, I am a owner of one duplex, one of the small owners that a lot of people say must be protected. As other people have said, the important thing to do is new housing construction. And not adding further burdens on those housing providers that are using their small holdings in order to fund their retirement. So yeah, I'm glad to see that they, I commend that the housing department is going to make sure that there's full public comment on these proposals, thank you.
Thank you. I think all the members of our community came out to speak. Appreciate many of the comments, one of which reminded me to thank John Aiken. Thank you Scott Neese for mentioning John without his help and enabling us to expand capacity to build taller. We know that an awful lot of this project wouldn't be possible. So definitely appreciate that shout out, Nora Freeman, thank you also for leading our legal team. And obviously ensuring John he could have the time to dedicate to this project. Alright, let's go to council member Dev Davis.
Thank you Mayor, I also want to thank the entire team as you did Mayor, the city staff, Google consultants and the community. For the years of work to get us to this point, I was so excited, I could barely eat my dinner. This is not only the largest development project in San Jose history. It's also one of the most significant and transformative large scale transit oriented developments happening in the entire world. And it's happening here in one of the largest cities in America with one of the world's largest companies. There are many unique aspects to this project, that's why the presentations took so long and took so many people. But not least among them and what hasn't been mentioned yet is that at both Google and the city. Women have held key leadership roles in many areas throughout this process so far. Which is still almost unbelievably very unusual in the real estate and development field. So I wanted to make sure to mention that this evening. The result of these years of work and extensive community engagement is an agreement that I venture to say has something for almost everyone to love. I think we had one or two people speak against it tonight. And whether it's parks, trails and open space, environmentally friendly design, affordable housing, job opportunities or community programs. There is so much to talk about in this, in this project. And if you've read the entire 495 page development agreement as I have in detail, you'll certainly agree that this is a very advantageous deal for our city of San Jose. And as an aside, I want to thank Nancy and Nicole for answering all my texts as I was going through those 495 pages, there were many. One area where I have a couple outstanding questions, it appears that Google will be paying the parks fees. For the affordable housing that will be built on the land they're dedicating to the city. Nicole, is that correct and can you tell me how that came about?
Yes, council member Nicole Burnham, yes, that is correct. Of the 800 units of affordable housing that are included in the park fee calculation. 600 of them are on the property or proposed for the property that will be donated to the city for development. At a value of $6.7 million in park fee. So we think that's a big win for the project, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it to my counterparts in housing to maybe talk about what the implication of that might be in terms of the developability of those properties.
Thanks, Jackie or Rachel, can you talk about what that means for the affordable housing developers? On those sites? Jackie, Rachel? There you are.
Hello, thank you council member Davis. So yes, the, I just wanted to repeat the question back to you, so you were asking about the parkland dedication related to the affordable housing?
Yeah, the fact that the park fees are going to be paid by Google, how does that impact the developers for the sites of the affordable housing projects? Cause I think it, I mean, it effectively lowers the per unit cost. But what does that, what does that mean for them, will we, what, like what benefits is that for them?
Right, so it actually provides quite a great benefit to our affordable housing developers. Because the parkland, the park obligation will be met. And so typically, a affordable housing developer will have to pay for those, the fees or dedicate land or whatever it might be. And so because all of that obligation is met by this agreement. It will effectively lower the overall cost of the development. And will just, I would say streamline the process because there's been a whole lot of negotiation that's already taken place and documentation and all of that is done ahead of time. And so it just allows the affordable housing development to move forward with all of that in place. So it will, it will decrease the cost, decrease the time and just complexity of the project itself and meeting those obligations. And, and I really think that it will meet our goals of being able to provide affordable housing faster and more for less cost than if those obligations were not met through this agreement.
Thank you, that's really exciting and I'm really happy that it means that the affordable housing will be able to be developed more quickly than it would otherwise, that's exciting. I also want to thank the Google team, Alexa Ricardo Javier and the city staff, Rosalind Nancy, Nicole, Tim and many others. Specifically who worked with the Deeredon Area Neighborhood Group, DANG. To ensure that, that they, the ones who will be most impacted by all these many years of constructions. Had input on the process and, and are now, as you, as you heard tonight, very excited to have Google be their neighbor. And so I am, I am just excited to have this come to my district and I want to think also, last but not least. The mayor and council member Peralis for being great partners in this process. Councilmember Peralis and I can be competitors at times and we have also proved through this process that we can be good collaborators, I appreciate that. So I will now move the memo by councilmember Peralis, the mayor and myself, which includes the staff recommendations. From the original memo on the 14th of May as well as the supplemental memo on the 17th. And then I'll also move the staff supplemental memo from today.
Second. Thank you councilmember Davis, seconded by councilmember Peralis, councilmember Peralis, I know you had a problem with your device and so I think you got bumped down in the order, why don't you go next and then we'll go right through the list.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate that Mayor. And I want to echo the thanks as well. And I'll start off by thanking the community members who did show up today. And I think as was heard clearly overwhelming support. And that's really just, I think, a testament to the amount of work that was put in, quite frankly, by everybody involved over the last several years. And especially want to thank and appreciate Mayor, you've sort of already done this and I think there'll be a lot of echoes of this but of our city staff and my office, think a personal thank you as well for the work over the last several years. And we've heard a lot of those names, but I wanted to list off some myself as well. SV Rising in the Equity Council, the Deeredon Area Neighborhood Group, members of the SAG. And including especially our own neighborhoods. Who volunteered, neighborhood leaders who volunteered their time from the San Jose Downtown Residents Association, Bill Souders, Frank Bontiano. Shannon Alloway, Whitney Morris and Pete Colstad. Excuse me, and Kevin Christman and Kathy Sutherland. Our city staff, again, I think so many individuals to thank, Rosalind Huey, Tim Rude. Jose Ruano, Kim Walesh, Lori Severino, Lee Wilcox, Nancy Klein. Jackie Morales Fran, Rachel Vanderveen, Nicole Berman, that, just so many individuals that my staff has worked with directly through this process as councilmember Davis pointed out, so much back and forth over the years. And thank you to the two individuals on my team that really helped take the lead, my chief of staff Christina Ramos and David Tran. And then of course as well to the Google team, I think it's just really, really been exciting, it's been a lot of work. But to see the collaboration over the last few years has really, really been, I think, a testament to what we can achieve. It took the whole city to come together and it certainly didn't come without its challenges. But we still continue to work despite even this current pandemic this past year. And you know, early on in the process, myself and a number of colleagues advocated for a very thorough community process, knowing that residents around this area specifically would be the most impacted. Despite the fact that we would see effects citywide and we know that we wanted that to be a broad engagement as well. I also asked Google to be a partner with our city and do additional outreach and they rose to that occasion. My office in particular participated in over 50 community meetings in which Google helped to partner or host in. Councilmember Davis and I met with residents, members of the Deeredon Area Neighborhood Group continually throughout this process. And as she stated, which is why you'll see the memo that we have co-authored with the mayor for today. A traditional development process would have brought together potentially hundreds of disjointed individual development proposals that in no way would have been able to bring about the community benefits that this development agreement is bringing us today. This is indeed the gold standard for how a private developer can work together with a city and the community. To truly be able to benefit everybody involved. And I think the late even settlement agreement, this, this, this late memo with an opportunity with the Sharks is even that much more indicative of this effort. It is my pleasure to be able to support this development agreement. And including the additional memorandums and especially that from myself, councilmember Davis and the mayor with further clarification. And so I appreciate that and thank you Mayor.
Give me councilmember, my apologies, I just stepped away for a second. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, wow, what a tremendous amount of effort to get this before us today. I, everyone has been thanking so many people, but I want to thank the community members who came and spoke. This, our staff certainly, members of the SAG and Google for their huge investment in San Jose. Nancy, I also want to give a shout out to you, you are right to be emotional, this is a huge remarkable day. And you ought to be proud for what you have done and how you have negotiated the project to where we are at this, at this moment in time. You know, this is a, this is a landmark decision that we're making to approve this Google project. Google has invested hundreds of millions of dollars in or plans on investing that in the city of San Jose. We know that this will turn us into a city that is the big city south of San Francisco. To the world-class city in the Bay Area. This is a tremendous effort to bring housing, jobs, transit into San Jose that will really change the way we do business here. And I'm really proud to be a part of it. I want to thank again all of the community members who came out and spoke and they spoke about their shared concerns. But also their shared visions to quote, to quote one of the speakers. There were a few people who objected, but over the last couple of years, we heard a lot of opposition and today we did not hear a lot of opposition. We heard a lot of people who are speaking in support of this proposal and that's because it's, it's the gold standard as councilmember Peralis mentioned. And I think all of our public, our private partnership developments that come along. And I think all of our public, our private partnership developments that come along really should mirror this. Mirror should should listen to the community, should sit down as often as possible with the neighbors to try and craft the best possible project for their community. I want to thank, I was new to this. I didn't, wasn't part of the city council in two thousand eighteen when this was approved initially. But I truly am grateful for both the Google staff and city staff to sit down with me on regular basis. To go over various phases of this project, so I could understand and get up to speed to the level that I needed to be in order to make this huge decision today. There is so much in this project to like. The the parks, housing, open space, the community benefits piece, the in the, the in. The affordable housing commitment of twenty-five percent units and more is amazing. I completely support the memo from the mayor, Councilmember Davis and Peralis. In fact, I was thinking of submitting my own memo regarding the one million dollars cord towards Gardner. Because I think we truly need to commit to Gardner. Gardner is as close, the closest community center to Deardonne Station and to the Google project. And we need to support the Gardner community as much as possible. I used to be the trustee, school board member trustee for that area, and I never felt like I gave it as much attention or love as I possibly needed to. So this is one little step that I can take to show support for that Gardner community. Who so desperately needs a little resources and a lot and a little bit of love. I do have a couple of questions. What is? You know, we talked about the agreement with the Sharks. I kind of missed some of those details. But Nancy, can you talk about how it relates to park, parking lot, A, B, and C? That was one risk you mentioned in a study session, and I wanted to know if that risk has been eliminated.
Councilmember, thank you so much for the question. What the settlement agreement does is give assurance to all parties. That we will work together on operations, particularly during construction and then on into implementation. To the specific question that you had. That over the long term, it would be a hope that there could be an agreement, further agreement on ABC between. Google, the Sharks and the city to allow Delaf development to proceed on ABC. The risk remains that if the development doesn't happen. We we have a certain amount of diminished office, about a million square feet, a certain amount of housing that won't get built. And consequently, some of the community benefits won't get delivered in terms of funding. So it's very positive, the agreement that was reached through everyone's very diligent efforts. And we have more work we hopefully will be doing shortly.
Okay. Thank you. I I appreciate that answer. The I'll look forward to that as that develops. Can you tell me what the timing is for the first phase of the construction, of the first phase of the first building? When, when are we likely to see that?
Alexa might wish to speak to that.
Yes, well, we, you know, we hope, of course, very soon. We are so excited to be here today and and. Potentially get through this ma- massive milestone, and I think as we come on the other side of it. Hopefully, with your collective approval. Then we will start to organize and think about our phase one. And so part of that is a couple of years of design process, probably a little less than that before shovels are really in the ground. And we get started with a good balanced mixed-use piece of our first phase. We want to make sure it has open space, it has housing, and it has office, and it is well-balanced. So we hope very soon, but obviously, tonight is a big step towards that opportunity.
So then, thank you, Alexa. Is it premature to ask during construction what the. Infrastructure, as far as the street is concerned, will look like on Santa Clara? What the is it, I I know some organizations have been concerned that the streets will be narrowed down to. Less lanes that they than they are now, but during construction and on within the ten years, is it too early to kind of decide what's going to happen there?
Yeah, so the BART obviously needs to do their construction of the BART tunnel. And therefore, the area directly on Santa Clara is likely not to be developed, particularly between Autumn and the station. And Cahill, I should say, until BART is through a major portion of their construction. And so the start will likely be south of Santa Clara. And won't impact Santa Clara in that first phase in terms of just street widening, or sorry, any street changes. Likewise, that specificity isn't held in our documents, but is part of the broader D-SAP in terms of Santa Clara, changes to Santa Clara.
Okay.
The project doesn't require those changes.
Okay. And thank you. Nancy, you mentioned something about. Three dollars and five cents a square foot that Google is paying when temporary certificate of occupancy is achieved. When that's in addition, or is that part of the community benefits piece?
That is very much part. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. That is very much part of the community benefits. And one of the innovations here is the community benefits are tightly coordinated with office. So that. We hope all of it moves forward quickly. And the office, we hope moves fat, both many to move forward, but tying to office is really helpful. And it's a million square foot, say, at a time, so three dollars at a million square feet, thirty million dollars to us, it's very positive.
Okay, very good. I was wondering how the how the math played out. I I'm really excited about all the community benefits piece, especially the early money that will be released. The emphasis on community stabilization and opportunity pathways. Are small businesses involved in that? And if so, how will they benefit?
I'll start. Alexa, may I want to jump in too? Definitely, small business is is included. We have had models that we've looked at and work that that the city staff have done in conjunction with Alum Rock and D5. I'm looking at anti-displacement for small businesses. Those efforts are very much supported by Google. Looking in a variety of ways of how those small businesses who are there now and who will come to the area can benefit. From having the the surge in in the company as well as all the people who will work and be around.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alexa, did you want to add something?
Oh, I just wanted to add, for us, the the ground plane, the both, the opportunity to do pavilions and pop-ups. But also along the base of of the buildings, it's going to be really important to get that right mix of local business proliferation alongside. Restaurants and so forth. And so we really, we've dedicated to concentrate on that mix. And will absolutely be really looking forward to doing that. Today, we have Valley Verde on site, year up. We've already started the experimentation of starting to create those inroads to make sure that it can grow as the project proceeds.
Bringing in small businesses, local small businesses will help bring the vibe to the city. That it is a city and that it's made up of residents, so.
Absolutely.
Anything we can do to encourage that vibe and local artists is also would be, would be.
Yeah, I mean, the great thing is it's a win-win. This is part of the beauty of of having somebody who's going to be the neighbor and in the space is we're extremely motivated. To, that's why we're coming to San Jose. So we certainly want all of that around us.
Great, I appreciate that. And I'm running out of time, but I want to finish by saying to Pat, a caller, welcome back. And maybe this is, will make San Jose cool enough that it'll actually bring my daughter, who's in her early twenties, back to San Jose when when it reaches this level. Thank you so much. I'm happy to support.
Hope your daughter's watching, Councilmember Foley. All right, Councilmember Renus.
Thank you. Well, I I hope that all of our newer generations get to experience this new. Iteration of San Jose. I know that each generation that's born and raised in San Jose. And those who have joined us in 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 between have seen how our downtown has changed. I still remember when I was a really young, we had these, downtown had these like seventies modern blue art. That was very abstract. And now we have this wonderful Sessa Chavez Plaza downtown that allows for all of us to gather for many different reasons. And so I'm excited about this new venture that we're all going to be in. And and to see the next iteration, the next evolution of San Jose. I I love San Jose. I love San Jose now, and and I have to say that it is vibrant. And it is a warm place to be. It's a safe place to be. And obviously, it's a place where I'm raising my children, and hopefully, Councilmember Foley will have your daughter come home to. Back to San Jose, as well as many others who who might have found their way somewhere else. And so I have to just say congratulations to all of the team. Mayor, I think you you had the most comprehensive list of 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 gratitude and thank yous to to everybody who was involved. And so I'm just going to say I I absolutely support everybody who you mentioned. And I want to especially thank our community members who have made the time to not only call in tonight. But be a part of the process in this last three years. They've given of their time and they've given of their energy. And so congratulations to you for the results that we have today. It clearly is part of the work that you've done. Your engagement has allowed us to have this development agreement today, and obviously, Google for their flexibility. And all of the folks who are part of that team, thank, thank you to all of you. So I'm going to ask about some questions regarding. The ecosystem for our youth and adult workforce. I saw in our. In the documents that there is about, there's a couple of different places for scholarships for youth and adults, which is three point two five. Then there is a. Educational opportunity for ten, about ten million. And what I wanted to ask about that is. There is a need to really align and coordinate and integrate our own City of San Jose programs. With the rest of the local systems and training centers. And I know that currently our our PNS, PRNS, our Parks and Rec Neighborhood Services Department is is in the middle of developing a logic model. But I don't want it to be a standalone logic, logic model that. That connects all of our internal programs, but that it coordinates with what we are doing here. And so I was looking at the California Workforce Development, and there's this Unified Strategic Workforce Development Plan. And it states that we have to have demand-driven skills attainment, so workforce and education programs need to be aligned. Program content with the state industry sector is what we are doing here, enabling upward mobility. I won't read the rest of it. It's it's quite lengthy, and then aligning, coordinating, integrating programs and services. And so one of the, one of. One of my focuses has been that the youth here in San Jose get to walk through the doors of Google as part of the workforce. And so how are we going to. Align, coordinate, and integrate our City of San Jose programs with the local school systems, with the training centers, with the trades programs. So that we can have something, an ecosystem that is integrated. And this ecosystem actually was from our Joe Harity, who is part of the Youth Opportunity. Program and has has been advocating to make, to ensure that our youth and adults, really, all of our community has here has an ecosystem that they can rely on. So who would answer that?
I I'm happy to start, Councilmember. This is a very important topic. And there's a lot that is going on, and so appreciate over the months that you have consistently been thinking deeply about this topic. And we need to make sure we're doing this work strategically. So we agree, staff agrees with the sentiments you've shared. There are principles of ensuring that the work through the fund, which, again, the multi-layered fund, when it. Gets up and going, has expertise and staff that are very keyed into workforce. Some of the consultants so that, or participants, so that there are bridges built to the work. And in addition to that, we want to keep layering and building on with the sixty groups that are in Bridge to Recovery. And we also, there's a couple of other core principles that I want to mention, Councilmember, that I think. From our previous conversations, our our goals to strive for, and you you will share if you believe so. One is that we have to work to make sure that housing and careers for the people who are living them are done simultaneously. That people who are moving into affordable houses can work with a career. That is linked to meaningful careers and work in order to ensure dignity for our residents. We we definitely want to focus on economic mobility. To your point, we want to give people opportunity to get into programming, IT management. That done right will have generational positive impacts on families. Who someone, say, for example, becomes an engineer, that can affect many of their children and grandchildren from from that point forward. We we definitely want to make sure, and this is one that that will, we so appreciate Google's leadership, and we need to do more. A lot of companies, and I'm not in any way trying to be disrespectful, will give money, but will not integrate their efforts to bring people in pipeline into the company. And and that is an effort that Work to Future and Google is going to, has committed to be on Work to Futures Board, as example. We need to keep bringing more companies together specifically to to have local opportunities. Which will help diversity, which will help in a lot of different ways. So it's an aspirational goal, but one that we're very, very keyed into. We we also need to make sure we recognize the city won't do the bulk of this work. We need to be very close and very culturally relevant, language relevant to organizations that can coordinate the learning. That will be able to to be meet with success, so.
And and who will convene that stakeholder group, who will integrate? Because you have a five-year strategic plan that is part of next steps. And so how do we integrate this particular want and desire? And hopefully, my my colleagues can, I I'd love to hear from them, but I I would love to see this pipeline fed. For future jobs here in San Jose from our own backyard. I I understand that there's going to be a lot of influx of of new San Jose residents. But I want our youth and our adults who might be displaced because of this pandemic to also have an opportunity to walk through those doors. So how are we going to, who's going to convene that, and how are we going to integrate this, these principles and these objectives into the five-year strategic plan?
Again.
Councilmember, I, go ahead. Could I offer one suggestion? I know there are many paths here, but just one suggestion of a program that has been up and running, as you know. Led by our library team, Joe Born and and Public Library Foundation. Well, and and as you know, hundreds of students in in Overfelt in your district are are participating, along with students from San Jose High and others. On a, through San Jose Aspires, to be able to. Really have very clear pathways to college. Carved and identified through the San Jose Aspires digital platform, which then provides both signposts as well as virtual dollars. scholar dollars, we call them, and then becomes real dollars when they graduate from high school, they can then use to offset the cost of college.
Right.
Vision is that this could be expanded as we think about and and really deepen for those students who then go into, for example, fields, tech and so forth, where we could actually continue this progression. So that, for example, using Google Dollars in this agreement, we could create Google Scholars in the colleges that would then have opportunities for internships. And they would also have a clear path to the kinds of IT technical computer science related fields, for example, that Google might be hiring from. So so that's our vision for trying to extend this. Obviously, this is just in the nascent stage now. I think by fall, we'll have about 1,000 students involved, but we really love to be able to expand it with these resources.
Right. And I think that's one one pathway forward. I wouldn't want it to be the only path forward, Mayor. And I I really appreciate that program. I think it's done some just marvelous things out for our youth in Overfelt, giving them some opportunity to buy books, to pay tuition, to, you know, just really pay down some of those costs. So it is absolutely real and and essential. I just, I want to make sure that there is a comprehensive and very integrated system into all of what we are doing. And at this point, I know internally, we can talk about this offline, but I know that I'm asking for a logic model from all of our programs so that we can see where that scaffolding is in terms of learning, capacity building, career planning, and really getting to to a place where you have a job here in San Jose. I don't know that it's clear at this point, and that's why I'm hoping that we can integrate that at least some direction in the strategic plan that the pipe that the purpose of this is to really create a pipeline of local youth and adult members of San Jose, so that they can also achieve a job like like Alexa's, although I think Alexa, you're a consultant, so kind of like Alexa's, but the Alexis of of Google. So so we can, I can wait until my next turn.
Yeah. Go back to the council. Councilmember Mayhan.
Thanks, Mayor. And, you know, I just, I think my colleagues covered the thank yous incredibly well, but I I will pile on for for just a moment and add my thanks to everyone who's brought us to this really exciting point. I feel like even over Zoom, the excitement is palpable. And and I'm certainly feeling it. So, you know, I'm new to council, I've followed followed this project and this concept for for quite a few years now. It's been incredibly excited. And as was referenced earlier, I also want to keep my kids in San Jose for the long haul. And thank you to Google for contributing to that goal. I think, thankfully, Sylvia and I still have quite a few years before we have to worry about that. But hopefully, by then, this vision that we're looking at tonight will be will be manifest, will be realized out in our community. So, you know, thank you to Google and the team for wanting to invest and grow in San Jose, and for going to great lengths to ensure that it's going to be a win for our entire community, which is something I know Councilmember Aranis was just speaking to. And I'll, I'll say as a former public school teacher in San Jose, I do think over the long haul for our entire city, the extent to which all of our young people have the access and opportunity to get those great jobs at companies like Google really is a measure of our success. And I don't expect Google to solve that problem single handedly for us. But I know you all want to be part of that solution. And and certainly, we need to engage a lot of others entities, including our public school system to achieve that vision. But I very much share it. Also, I want to thank city staff for the countless hours of work. And I know there are countless more to come to actually realize the the plan that I believe we're going to approve in a moment here. I want to thank Mayor Licardo and his team, Councilmembers Davis and Peralos, who I know have invested from this time and effort. And of course, thank the many, many community members, neighborhood leaders, business and labor representatives, and and others who really engaged deeply participating in the SAG and shaped this vision and made it something I I think, as you heard in public comment, we're all incredibly proud of. It just, it gives me a lot of confidence in the future of our city to see a plan for Downtown West that integrates in a holistic and thoughtful way, good jobs, affordable housing, parks, public art, retail, transit, environmental sustainability, public health. I mean, it really, it is the most comprehensive holistic vision I've seen. And to me, it's it's an example of our city being what it ought to be, which is the most innovative, inclusive, and forward looking city in the world. So anyway, it wasn't obvious. I'm extremely excited and thrilled that that we're going to move forward here. I did, I did want to just briefly dig a little deeper into one aspect of the project that I know is going to be critical for us to get right in the years ahead, which is mobility. And, you know, how we move people around more efficiently and safely in this area? How do we give Sharks fans convenient alternatives to driving and parking while also acknowledging our commitments around those things, providing more mobility options to residents, and increasing the convenience of making this area accessible to residents who may lack access to high frequency transit, which is, I just have to point out, representing District 10, where many of my residents are lucky if they live half a mile from a bus line that maybe runs every 30 or 40 minutes. You know, certainly, we don't want them to feel excluded from the space. So how do we, how do we increase those opportunities? And so, you know, Jessica, I don't know if you or others want to speak to this. I'd be especially interested to hear the conversations staff is currently having and plans to have with staff at VTA, Caltrain, other entities and partners, including Google, of course, how we're anticipating this monumental investment in the increased demand. And and maybe more specifically, what are we, what are we requesting? What are we securing in terms of new commitments from VTA and other transit agencies? And there's been a lot of work done around the the Dirt on Station itself. But what should council expect in the months and years ahead? And what are the substantive changes that we're expecting from our partners as this investment moves forward?
Thank you very much, Jessica. Thank Deputy Director for the Department of Transportation. There have been a lot of thank yous this evening, but perhaps not enough to the various partners, some of which you mentioned, Councilmember Mayhan, but Caltrain, the Valley Transportation Authority, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and High Speed Rail, who have all really been partnering with us and collaborating on transit throughout the city, throughout the region, in the case of of Caltrain and MTC, and in the future, High Speed Rail. And so our collective goal is to continue to grow the transit, the rail, the mobility network generally, as a city and with our partners, so that our transit operations, as well as our rail, connects this particular place to all of California, and particularly on a frequent basis, all day long into the evening, to the rest of the region. Right? That's the kind of place that we're building here together, is this one that is connected much more robustly than than it is today even. And as you'll probably recall, we are we are building for an eightfold increase in transit ridership at Deer Don Station. And already, this area is the core of our transit system within the downtown and at Deer Don today. So I think a couple, couple critical things that we are working on in addition to the BART extension, also with VTA, and with the support of the Downtown West Project, how we dedicate transit lane space along Santa Clara Street into the future plan for that, so that the transit that is already the highest ridership corridor within the county can continue to be reliable, can be faster, can get people to more parts of the city and the region quickly. And then I think the other piece is, I'll be concise, I know time is is moving forward. The other piece is that the transportation demand management proposal that we see from the Downtown West Project, and that is proposed more generally in in the next item in the Deer Don Station area plan, is really about not only the services being there, but also the usage, making it really easy for people to to use transit as their primary way of getting around, along with walking and biking, scooting, whatever the future holds for new mobility as well. We do also really want that to be all day and into the evening, so that people can take advantage of these resources, whether they're going to work, passing through the area, or going to events.
Thanks, Jessica. It's an exciting vision. I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm also mindful of the significant fiscal challenges some of our public agencies and especially transit agencies face. And I'm just, I'm curious to what extent we're betting on those more expensive modes like like rail, which obviously, this is this, this is the place where it makes sense to new rail, don't get me wrong. But but you mentioned, I think you were mentioning rapid bus lanes or dedicated bus lanes there, bikes. I know a couple of months ago, we talked about Glideways as a potential solution to as an airport connector. Are we, what sort of the, do we have an innovation agenda around this that you're excited about? And to what extent are our partners at these other agencies willing to think about, think differently about how we move more people more cost effectively?
Yeah. Great question. So I think that the the innovation within the industry continues to happen. It's part of why we've built in a number of flexibility mechanisms within the Downtown West Project, because we can only predict so far. But I think the one thing that is true across transportation technologies is is about time competitiveness and about getting people in and out of of an area in a way that is workable for their lives and for their schedules. And being on fixed rail, being on bus rapid transit lines, being on the the BART system, those are all technologies that continue to prove out that they can be time competitive with any other, you know, traditional car choice. The Airport Connector is another great example that you've raised. We're in the process of continuing to pursue private partners to work with public agencies and the VTA, Caltrain, High Speed Rail, MTC, we are all looking at how to integrate that into our plans for Deer Don Station really robustly. With with time, I'll be mindful and let
Thank you. And I'll and I'll just wrap up by saying I appreciate the comments. Look forward to learning more. And as someone who commuted on Caltrain for quite a while, I agree, I'm just, I'm mindful of the intercity intra-city transit from our from some of our more residential neighborhoods on the edges of the city. But that's, I'm sure, a conversation for another day. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Also, just to add, VTA Committee just moved forward the two and a half million dollar commitment. They'll go to the board for the Airport Connector. So they are absolutely a partner.
Great.
Keep working with them. Thank you. Councilmember Crossco.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, yeah. Thank you so much, Mayor, for for your extensive list of of thank yous. I don't know if I could have come up with such a wonderful list. I know I would have missed somebody. So I just want to echo my gratitude to all of the folks that have worked all these years to get get here. I just wanted to to express the same gratitude. Truly, there were days, and there were sometimes meetings where I have to be honest, I had some doubts that we were going to be here, just because there were challenges, as Councilmember Peralis mentioned, and because of the sheer magnitude of the project. We all knew that this would be a transformative project. It was, it's, it's by far the largest project that we've seen come to San Jose. We knew that it would be, for for many, life changing. And it's a project that's not going to be started or completed overnight. It's going to be one that's going to span many, many years. And it won't be completed, it'll be completed way after I'm I'm long gone from council. And so I'm grateful to be part of the, at least the beginning of the of this project, and seeing some of it come to fruition and and look forward to seeing some of this take place. I do want to express my gratitude to the folks that that came to my office. We engaged in some very meaningful conversations. And and it gave me a very deep appreciation for 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 our residents love and devotion to the city. And and it really, it really deepened also my own sense of love and devotion for this city. I was born and raised here. I'm raising my my last three, three of my four children here. I hope that they will stay here. Of course, at some point, they have to spread their wings and and fly, just like Councilmember Foley's daughter. And one of my daughters is gone, and hopefully she'll come back. And and that's what what life is about. I left Santa Barbara and I came back. And and we hope that the city where they were born will offer them something to return to. And 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 so hopefully, Google will be part of that transformation and be able to offer our children that kind of an evolution. But 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 nonetheless, I really want to thank the community members who who pushed us, who challenged us, who I believe were responsible for making this project even better than what was originally envisioned. And Councilmember Davis mentioned how one of the remarkable aspects of this project was was the the many women that were involved in the project. And 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 that's, that is a remarkable feat. When when we've struggled so so much to be here. But I do want to also comment on something that I think is is of particular pride for me. And that's Ricardo and Javier, who were also part of the team. One is because Javier is part of a little neighborhood that that I I happen to know very well. And I didn't grow up in it, but I grew up in a neighborhood right next to it. He grew up in Washington. And and Ricardo is from the east side. And so two young men who represent two neighborhoods where it's primarily an immigrant and Latino neighborhoods, and they were able to connect well with the community, and were able to represent those communities very well. And so I'm very grateful that they were part of the team and were able to have those kind of really in-depth knowledge and connections to communities that were that were very concerned, individuals that were very fearful of change, were very fearful of being displaced, were very fearful of being left out of this formula. So I want to extend my gratitude for your knowledge and your wisdom and your your, you know, the the particular elements that you were able to contribute to this process. And then and then I also wanted to comment on on a few items that Councilmember Aranis brought up. And that was really the the what has been of particular importance for me in terms of how we make space and how we preserve the future of our of our next generation and the generation after that, and the generation after that, I hope. And that's our youth and how they are going to participate in all of this. And I express that every time that the Google team came into my office. And and I think what, you know, Councilmember Aranis can can correct me if I'm wrong, but it really is, it's not just about aligning our programs. It really is about how are we going to leverage our resources? Right now, we're seeing an infusion of funding. But we we've seen in much, much more scarcer moments, how those fundings can be very limited, can be finite, they're not always going to be, you know, what we're seeing today, but how we leverage and how we stretch those dollars, how we make sure that our funding and the funding from Google and others who might be part of this wonderful process, how it's all braided together, and how we make sure that we maximize those funds, and we make this a seamless process for our kiddos. And so I think Uh, for our our kiddos. And so um, I think that this is a unbelievable opportunity. Where we can finally uh, disrupt the uh, pipeline um, that that infamous. And uh, notorious uh, uh, pipeline that we've been trying to disrupt, which is the pipeline to prison. Uh, or the prison to pipeline, um, which has been very difficult uh, for children of color not to get trapped. Uh, into. And so I think we have an opportunity that we shouldn't uh, negate. Where we could truly, truly put kiddos on a, on a pathway to success. A pathway that that we haven't truly seen in the past. We have some really great programs, um, no doubt. But how do we measure it? How do we use uh, the data that we should be collecting? And how do we make sure that um, that we uh, uh, that we uh. That we we put kids from the east side, from uh, the Washington area, uh, from the uh, Winchester Cadillac area. Into uh, career paths are truly going to benefit not just them, but the future generations of their offspring. And so um, I think that there's a lot of thinking that needs to be done around this. And uh, and I think that convening uh, but being very strategic about how we do this. Is going to uh, make all of the difference uh, in the world. So again, I I thank you um, to the teams. Thank you to our city employees. Want to thank the council members who really led this, of course, uh, councilmember Peralis and councilmember Davis. And I want to thank the mayor for his vision. Uh, but I I also want to thank all of the community members that came and spoke today. Um, again, had you not been at the table, uh, I don't think that we would be here today. You you've made it a a much more enriching experience and a much uh, uh. A a project that is really worth being proud of and uh, and being able to brag about so much better. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, councilman Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Um, you know, there, I'm not going to attempt to thank everyone. I know it's been said a lot, but uh, just want to give a big, broad and deep thank you to to everyone that made this possible. Uh, city staff, Google, e- everyone, community, obviously. Um, yeah, I just want to relay some some sentiments that came to mind as I was listening to all the comments. And and there's some words that I think that came to mind for me and it helps summarize sort of what we've, what we're witnessing, right? And and some of those words are teamwork, hard work, collaboration, listening, openness. Commitment, forward-looking, thoughtfulness. Um, those are the things that came to mind for me. Again, as we were going through the presentation and uh, also what I've seen uh, in the various meetings I've had. Whether it be with stakeholders in the community, Google, city staff. Um, so I wanted to express that. I also thought it was important to highlight um, some comments that stood out to me and they were made by uh, Sarah McDermott from Unite Here. So I think the political director there. Um, and it stood out to me because I think it was, it really to me is indicative of what. Many leaders in our community experienced during the process, the process of, you know, Google coming to San Jose. Um, and as she said, uh, and I think this applies to many folks, including folks that. I I'm not sure if any of the folks that chained themselves to the to the chairs are here supporting this project. But uh, but but I think what her her sentiment, as she expressed it really, um, I think can be attributed to many folks up there. And she says something along the lines of, you know, there were moments, especially at the beginning, that she was outweighing signs and opposition. And and spent time listening to presentations from Google and staff and and offering thoughts. All the while, her her, uh, the the evolution and her thinking about the project was taking place. And uh, it it just made me think about just that the it, I'll just use the word, the evolution of support for this project uh, and where we've come from. Um, is really stood out to me. Um, and I think that that uh, really transformation from opposition to support. It really is a testament to all the hard work by all stakeholders. You know, I've seen firsthand uh, and have heard time and again. From stakeholders in the community that Google, the Google team as well as the city team, uh, truly and authentically. Listen to what the community uh, was concerned about. Uh, and and I, for one, and I'm sure we all do. Uh, but but I really do appreciate that. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to the community and and I wish uh, that this would happen on many, many more issues. That come before us, uh, in that every, everyone sat around with an open heart, open mind. Um, and really try to 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 forge a pass path forward that really brings together everyone's um, sort of passions. And interest and things that they think they're important. So um, but that's all I wanted to say. Uh, with that being said, let me, let me just say that I'll I'll be supporting the project and certainly look forward to seeing how it transforms our city for years to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, obviously I wasn't here for a lot of the work that's been done on this project. Um, but I've always felt this was a an incredible opportunity to bring a company like Google right into our downtown. To make our city even more able to live up to to the moniker capital of Silicon Valley. Um, and this isn't just about tech jobs. There will be all kinds of jobs, including good union jobs, involved in building this project and and working on site. Once it's done. So I'm excited for for what this might will mean for the future of San Jose. Um, I I want to thank Google for being such a great partner in this project. Unlike Amazon, who went around shopping for cities where they could extract concessions in order to locate there. Google came here as a partner willing to invest in making the community a better place. And and that's what really makes this project so special really is is their willingness to be that kind of partner. Um, so congratulations to Nancy and dozens of city staff who were involved in making this outstanding deal. Um, I also want to thank Nancy and her office and everybody involved in this project for helping as me as a new council member. Um, be up to speed on this project. There was a lot of work done by you and your staff to make sure that our office always understood all the details of this complicated project. So we were ready for this today. Um, that there was a lot, that was a really impressive um, effort on your part and I I thank you for that. Um, so far, we haven't had any comment, nobody's really commented about Google's commitment to being carbon neutral and environmentally responsible. And I'm also excited about plans for the utility district that will be built here and look forward to seeing what we learn from it. And I'm hoping that we'll look back on these parts of the project and see that they've become a new normal for smart, sustainable development in San Jose. Um, finally, I'm excited about today's development, uh, to bring the sharks along in this project. Um, I've long said that sports teams across the country are dying to build their new arenas downtown. And in this case, a downtown is being built around them. They're getting a downtown coming to their arena without having to build a new arena. And this will lead to a new vibrant base of support and allow for new ways for fans to get to games and help them finally bring a Stanley Cup to San Jose. So I'm excited about a lot of the elements of this project and glad that we've gotten to this point. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you. Uh, vice mayor Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues for thanking all the people that I would like to thank. So thank you. Um, I want specifically um, thank Nancy for probably about forty-seven briefings that we had. On this project and um, and have the opportunity for you to to really be a a guide. For me in terms of understanding this this project, because I have to be honest. At the beginning of this project and at the beginning of this effort, uh, I was hopeful, but uh, pessimistic. At the same time, in terms of how this was going to turn out. Um, but due to the the hard work, dedication and commitment of city staff. Google, the community, uh, it really creates a a model and a framework. Not just for future developments, but as councilmember uh, Jimenez alluded to. Actually, it creates a a framework to how we can work on other issues together and collaborate and come together and get something done. So uh, I think that we're really creating something special that I think that we could all be proud of. Uh, Christine Davis actually took uh, the line I was going to say, and that was that great cities do great things. And this project is a great thing that's going to be transformational for the city of San Jose. And it's uh, I'm excited. It's going to take a while to 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 pan out, but uh, I think there's uh, great things ahead of us. I do want to raise or focus on one particular item and that's a, a topic that will probably surprise you that I brought up. In numerous meetings with Google and that is with um, DBE or minority or small business participation in the project. And I see that they have a ten percent goal and I'd like to challenge Google to to up that goal. To fifteen or or twenty percent and and really make an effort to bring in small business, bring in minority businesses. And really have an opportunity to to change lives, transform businesses in 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 communities. Because the amount of money that's going to be uh, produced and spent on small businesses and large businesses. But particularly small minority businesses can really make a difference in terms of the viability, sustainability and growth. Of our community and really create wealth and create role models and create opportunities for for our community. So again, I want to challenge Google to to be more aggressive in that number and let's see what we can do. But that's it, Mayor, and I wholeheartedly support this project.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Sparza.
Thank you. Um, I'll be quick. Um, I, and I won't name everybody that you did mayor. Um, for all the folks that worked so hard to get to this point, um, including our city staff. But most of all, I wanted to also thank the community, from the folks who chained themselves to the, the chairs. To folks that spent um, hours and and months and years. To try and and make something better and try to produce something that had a better outcome for our community. And for lots of folks within that community. Um, and uh, thank you to councilmember Carrasco. For bringing up Javier and Ricardo. I I talk a lot about um, you know, representing a part of the city. Where if you go to a lot of the kids in district seven, um, they don't think they live in Silicon Valley. Here, they're growing up in the shadows of Silicon Valley, um, and and don't have access to the types of opportunities. Um, that other folks do. And so I'm hoping that ultimately, beyond all the buildings and the roads. Uh, and the and the trains and everything that we're building out of this, beyond the material things. I hope that that's what we really change, that we create more opportunities for more people out of this process. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and actually, uh, councilmember Asparza just sort of doubled down, so I'll triple down on the the last thanks there. Um, I think I I uh, missed as well Javier and Ricardo, uh, two individuals that come from. As councilmember Carrasco pointed out, come from low-income families, communities in our city. That it through this process, we're directly involved in trying to protect the the displacement of families. Just like uh, Ricardo and Javier's um, were when they were growing up. And I think what's truly significant about that is when you have individuals like them, that are not just on the community side. But they're actually the 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 living proof of the the experience of individuals that can come from the community. And then be sitting on the other side of the table, um, with a tech company as big as Google. To now help marry this this conversation that we've had. And and I do think that they were a a very significant part in what ultimately got us to to this as well, from from Google's side. Uh, of the table. So uh, uh, thank you to them and and obviously thank you to to Alexa as well on on that team.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you. As my daughter runs away, so she's not caught on camera. She really should be in bed. I don't know what's happening in my household. Um, okay, so I I'm just going to finish up. Uh, my comments and and I I want to thank you, Mayor, uh, because I don't think I said this earlier. I know that um, there wasn't very many opportunities for our youth um, in San Jose. And um, with your partnerships with a lot of the the businesses here in San Jose, there you've built up an array of programs. And so I'm really grateful for that. There's um, a lot of our kids out there who don't know what they're going to do after high school. And uh, I was, I was visiting one of the high schools, um, and I think I mentioned this before and I saw a survey. And and I just went back to look at it, um, because you know, the, some of the things that they said was, I I hope I get a nice, stable job. Um, I I worry about my future of not having enough money, of what my job will be and how I will be living. Um, and 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 a lot of this is very basic, um, in in terms of how will they make ends meet? And and that's not the kind of aspirations I want to hear, um, and the the kind of worries, you know, I I. That I, that from from our kiddos, especially kiddos in our east side that we know are falling further and further behind. Because of this pandemic. Um, and so I I I just want to make sure that. That the 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 programs that we currently have um, are coordinated with other systems. So that we can maximize all of the um, resources available to us. And I I see that missing um, here and so uh, for me, it's really um. Hoping that, a- and maybe this is could be part of a friendly amendment, um, councilmember Davis. Sorry, I hate to do this to you. Um, but a- a- and maybe it's just a general i- intent of the council to um. Create a pipeline or workforce ecosystem that coordinates with other uh, school, job training systems. Um, so that we can provide some guidance to our uh, our community advisory committee, which will ultimately be. Uh, driving this 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 whole process. Um, but I think we need to have some, if it's not today and it's okay. Uh, we can talk about this later, but I think there needs to be some, some uh, direction from our council in terms of where we want to see. Uh, um, and how we want to see these systems developed and and aligned. And I think we we are in the moment where we can take advantage of a lot of these resources and have a a wonderful youth. And adult workforce ecosystem that works with others. Um, and and so that we're not the only ones. Um, but we're doing our part, right? We're doing our part in in all of this. We're we're, it's not completely our responsibility. But we give hope to our 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 kiddos out there. And that, I think that's the the, what really prompts me and Nancy, thank you for being so patient with me with. Cause you've heard this before, uh, I don't know how many times. And I know that you've been listening and I know that Ricardo and Alexa. And Javier and I will um, also underline all uh, the comments from, from councilman Peralis, Carrasco. And Asfarza, that it brings me great joy, um, to see such such achievements from our own. Uh, city of San Jose and and folks who grew up here, uh, because really we want so many of those uh, children. That are in in such dire straits now to have those opportunities as Javier did, as as Ricardo um, has now. Um, and so, and so I think it's up to us as policymakers to decide that kind of direction. And so would you, would you be open, councilmember Davis, to to providing some some policy direction?
Let me just ask Nancy, I thought the uh, community stabilization fund kind of work plan and direction was going to come back to us. And this sounds like that fits in into that. And so I'm, I'm hesitant to do that without us being able to have a full discussion about that. Councilmember Arenas.
No, no problem. Li- listen, I I I just want to make sure that we have some level of direction. If this is coming back, I'm happy to to wait for that moment.
I'm pretty sure it is. Nancy, do you know the timeline on that?
Thank you. The timeline is something we have to work out. The fund um, will take a bit of time to get moving on. We'll need to do the work to bring on the fund manager and seat the committee. And then it's with the committee and the fund manager with council to develop and approve the five-year strategy. So so it it will likely take a couple of years, um, realistically. And it ties in as well to the dollars coming in from say that first uh, certificate, uh, temporary to certificate of occupancy. For the first um, office building to get some real dollars.
So would what councilmember Arenas is asking for fit in with the se- the early seven and a half million?
Oh, absolutely. It it, there's, there is so much directed work and and if I might just suggest the metaphor I'm thinking about is. Infrastructure. We need to build the infrastructure that connects these projects in a strict and and efforts and. a strategic way. So absolutely, more work needs to be done there, and we can begin at it with the seven point five.
Could I offer an additional pathway? And I think I can say this since we're in a public meeting, but I had a similar conversation with Councilmember Carrasco, expressed some of the same sentiments about the disconnectedness of of many of our programs. And I think this is absolutely a topic we'll be taking up in the budget, and I expect to address it, and I expect you, Councilmember Arenas, will be weighing in on this. And so I think we'll be able to take action on getting started in the next several weeks.
Perfect. And Mayor, there's also an MBA that went along with your budget message that speaks to this as well. But but that's our our San Jose efforts, and I wanted to make sure that our internal efforts are connected and coordinated well with the rest of the systems. And so, you know, I'll wait for another moment for our Community Advisory Committee to come together. I think we're all excited. I'm excited. And I just want to make sure we provide the the type of direction, because we see the dire need of our youth to have more opportunities. But but I'm more than happy to to wait for that. I know that we'll 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 address it during our budget discussions, and then we'll I'll make sure to that I I have some policy direction if I am able to within the community five-year advisory committee than that five-year strategic plan. So thank you, Councilmember Davis. I appreciate that, and thank you, Mayor.
Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just appreciate the opportunity to say a few things. I I did want to thank the entire mayor and council for your support and for really always pushing us to ensure that our community needs are met and and not selling San Jose short in our community short. And I think that's I think that's what we've accomplished here. Unfortunately, we we found a partner who also didn't want to sell San Jose in our community short, and that's Google. So just thank you so much to all of you. Special thanks to you, Mayor, for your vision on this, and and Councilmember Prowl and Davis. Our teams have worked with you all a lot, and just thank you for your your leadership. And just, you know, I I just need to say this, I couldn't be more proud of of the city team tonight. So thank you all of you.
Thank you, Dave. And you should absolutely feel proud of the team that you're leading across so many departments. So many people came together, and it happened because you pushed to make sure that we were we were up to the to the moment, and I really appreciate your leadership on this. And I'll just say to all my colleagues, if you happen to vote for this, thank you. On behalf of all my neighbors who are tired of the anti-Google protesters coming to my house on Saturday mornings, apparently, my efforts to put out orange juice and bagels for them did not address their concerns. So hopefully, with this vote, we can move forward, and my neighbors will be able to sleep in on Saturday mornings. All right, I think we have a motion. Let's vote.
Amanas?
Yes.
Prowl?
Yes.
I.
Carrasco?
I.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Oli?
I.
Mayhem?
I.
Jones?
Hi.
Ricardo?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are not done yet. We've got more work to do here. Items eight point one and ten point three, we will hear together, and we also concurrently hear public comment. I want to remind everybody, the hour is now nine fifty-four, which means we all need to be super succinct so we can make sure we can get our work done this evening.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kick off with a brief presentation on ten point three, the amended Deardong Station Area Plan, and James is going to bring up the slides real quickly. And we just want to say thank you to all of the acknowledgement of city staff. Of course, it was many of the same city city staff members that worked on the Downtown West Project that also worked on the Deardong Station Area Plan, and also want to acknowledge our consultant team as well. You can go to the next slides, James. And the next. Keep going. So just a quick reminder of why we are looking at amending the Deardong Station Area Plan, and obviously, several things have changed since the City Council approved the plan back in 2014. Many changes, including, of course, Google's mixed-use development project. We're no longer planning for a ballpark in the area. And and the biggest reason is that we have this great opportunity to take advantage of increased heights throughout the Deardong Station area, which means increased development capacity. Next slide. So we've talked about this earlier regarding, you know, how our work has really been built upon the existing vision of the Deardong Station Area Plan, again, focusing on what we want to see for the for the entire area with the mix of uses, including homes, affordable homes, businesses, amenities, of course, all within walking distance of the transit hub. Next slide. So one of the key components that's actually new in the amended Deardong Station Area Plan is how we are looking to advance racial equity. It is a core component of the DSAP Amendment. So in addition to establishing strategies for the production and preservation of affordable housing and protection of renters, the plans includes an open space and public life approach that aims to provide equity in the quality and types of parks, amenities, and park spaces. The plan's mobility approach promotes social and economic equity, supporting inclusive access to the different transportation modes that provide economic and health benefits for our residents. And in addition, the small business approach builds on the city's existing business anti-displacement and economic recovery work that will include ongoing engagement with many of our residents and small businesses. Next slide. And we've talked a lot about the enormous amount of community engagement for the Deardong Station Area Plan Amendment. We paralleled the engagement with the Downtown West Project. And of course, many meetings, events, and surveys were held, and I especially want to acknowledge the work of the Deardong Area Neighborhood Group. These individuals live immediately adjacent to the Downtown West Project, and then, of course, are in the Deardong Station area and are very much vested and very supportive of development in the area, and just want to acknowledge working side by side along with them, and we know that we have continued work to do with them. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Ru, Planning Division Manager, who's just going to very quickly take us through some of the highlights of the plan document.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This table shows the maximum build-out program that was analyzed in the environmental documents for the Downtown West Project and for the remainder of the Deardong Station area. Outside of Downtown West, the build-out program was based on the development potential of the approximately sixty-five acres in the DSAP that staff and consultants analyzed as having the most potential to redevelop in the next twenty years. Next slide. The boundary of the DSAP has been extended by approximately twelve acres, including picking up all of the Downtown West Project, as well as some areas for potential future park and trail development. Next slide. The amended DSAP reflects Google's Downtown West Development Proposal and integrates it into the larger area. It includes a greater mix of uses and flexibility. Land uses and heights were planned to be compatible with adjacent uses, and the land uses, heights, and density support the city's policies and goals for jobs and housing. Next. The amended DSAP includes revisions to general plan land use designations in the area, and it takes a more mixed-use land approach, including transforming the Deardong Station area into a more dynamic, sustainable, and equitable mixed-use urban neighborhood. Next. To achieve consistency with the Minero San Jose International Airport's outer safety zone, the amended DSAP includes an outer safety zone overlay for the area shown in blue. Within this overlay, there are maximum occupancy restrictions, and large regional shopping centers, stadiums, and hospitals, and other similar activities are prohibited. Next. Building height has been a key concern of many community members, and building heights have gone through several iterations. Staff developed an initial spring 2020 preliminary concept. Next. Then, in response to community feedback and DANG input, the second iteration reduced the proposed allowable heights in the areas highlighted in blue, increased them in the areas highlighted in red, and added step-back plane transition standards to address areas of key concern. Next. Following the release of the DSAP document draft in fall 2020, a further engagement with DANG and other stakeholders, and additional analysis of potential development yield resulted in additional height reductions, additional step-back planes, and new requirements for landscaping and perspective renderings in these areas. Next. The draft amended DSAP's urban design standards build on the downtown design guidelines and standards the council adopted in 2019, which already apply to the Deardong Station area. The orange and blue lines show the proposed step-back transition standard locations. Next. As shown in the map, certain properties within the area are proposed to be rezoned to the conventional zoning districts that align with the underlying general plan land use designations. Next. And the city has shifted its open space strategy toward the planning of a dispersed network of open spaces and neighborhood parks. The open space strategy for the larger station area consists of ten acres of publicly-owned open spaces as a supplement to the existing open spaces bordering the area. Next. The mobility approach aims to support the city's general plan and climate smart goals by increasing the share of people moving around the area on foot or by other alternatives to single-occupant vehicles from the current level of forty percent to at least seventy-five percent by 2040, which will require that the Deardong Station area become much more people-centered. Next. The draft amended plan reinforces the parking and transportation strategies in the 2014 DSAP and recommends a Parking and Transportation Management District and Transportation Management Association to coordinate and manage parking and transportation demand management strategies in the Deardong Station area. Next. The draft amended DSAP will significantly increase overall sustainability through a mix of uses, high-density, sustainably-designed buildings, and an urban environment that promotes walking, biking, and transit. Next. The city's environmental consultant prepared an initial study and addendum to the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR, which was adopted or certified in 2018. The study and technical reports were independently reviewed by the city based on the criteria in the SECO guidelines to determine that an addendum is appropriate. Although not required, the addendum was also circulated for public comment, and comments were responded to. As with the Downtown Strategy 2040 EIR, the initial study addendum for the DSAP Amendment is a program-level document with project-level clearance for specified impacted areas. Individual projects within the DSAP will be required to undergo project-specific SECO analysis prior to approval, just like today for all major development projects downtown. Next. Community input has been central to the development of the draft amended DSAP. For example, based on community input, the plan emphasizes equity, significantly adds development capacity to take advantage of transit access and maximize housing and jobs, includes design standards for building height transitions, promotes a wider mix of uses, revises the open space plan to ensure better access to amenities, and updates the mobility network to prioritize walking, transit, and bicycling while locating auto circulation and parking facilities at the perimeter. Next. Deardong neighbors have been working with the city for two decades, from the SNI Initiative and 2014 DSAP through the recent process, and we appreciate all the time and share the goal of maintaining and improving quality of life in the area, including the Delmas Park Neighborhood. Top concern was the relationship between new high-rise buildings and adjacent single-family residences of the areas highlighted in blue on this map, particularly where the DSAP boundary cuts across property lines rather than along streets. There is concern about possible impacts to residents' quality of life from locating new businesses and parking garages too close to these property lines. Throughout the process, DANG has suggested revisions to the DSAP to ensure that developers and the city will coordinate with neighbors on design and set clear expectations about these interfaces. So changes made to the draft DSAP include further reducing building heights in certain areas, new step-back plane transition standards, and additional landscape buffer standard for these transition areas, and a new requirement for prospective renderings of new development in these areas. Next. In response to DANG's concerns about the preliminary building height concepts in the twenty spring 2020 outreach, staff reduced the proposed allowable heights in the draft DSAP in the areas highlighted above on the left, and added the step-back plane transition standards. Following the release of the draft in fall 2020, further engagement resulted in additional height reductions, additional step-back planes, and new requirements for prospective renderings and landscaping. Next. This before-and-after simulation shows how new development along Columbia Avenue would be required to step down toward the lower buildings to the south. Next. This sketch view, looking north along Willis Avenue toward Osire Avenue, shows how new high-rise buildings along San Carlos would be required to step down toward the adjacent neighborhoods of these uptight transition states. Next. The planning commission recommended to the council all of the actions listed here and described in the staff report. Next, I'll hand off to Jackie Morales-Franz and Kristen Clements from the Housing Department to present the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan for the Deardong Station area. Thank you.
Great, and thank you, Jackie Morales-Franz. I'm the Director of Housing, and I'm joined today by Kristen Clements, or tonight, who's our Division Manager in the Housing Department, and Su Jata Chavista, who's a consultant from Strategic Economics. As stated at the beginning of the evening, the vision of this redevelopment was to ensure that it was, is, an equitable development. I like to think of housing as the heart of an equitable development plan, as affordable housing is central in meeting the needs of our underserved communities. Having a home or being able to remain in your home is key in ensuring that our residents can thrive. Next slide. The City Council gave staff direction over 2018 and 2019 regarding affordable housing in Deardong, including a twenty-five percent affordable housing goal. The plan before you is a strategy document. It includes ways to achieve the twenty-five percent production goal, and it identifies compatible strategies to keep affordable housing in place and to protect lower-income and underserved residents. It is important to note that the majority of the twenty-one strategies identified in this plan need additional stakeholder outreach, requires that the City Council take further action in order to implement these strategies. So we have to come back. Next slide. Rachel shared this slide earlier this evening. The three Ps provide a comprehensive approach to addressing our housing crisis. First, we want to produce more subsidized housing overall. Second, we want to preserve housing that is currently affordable. And third, we want to help protect renters from displacement through policies and programs. While the City Council directed staff to focus on production and the integration of affordable housing into the Deardong Station area, staff included the other two Ps to respond to feedback from the community and to be consistent with best practices on residential anti-displacement work. Next slide. Geographically, the three Ps are focused in two different areas. Production will be focused in this Deardong Station area boundary, which is the solid black line. Preservation and protection include a half-mile buffer around the Deardong Station area. This area is referred to as the Neighborhood Stabilization Study Area in the plan, and on the map, the boundary is the dotted purple line. The half-mile distance for the Neighborhood Stabilization area was chosen because there's evidence from research on Bart Station areas that there's a price effect at a half-mile radius that is large enough and could be displaced decently. That there's a price effect at a half mile radius that is large enough and could be displaced destabilizing for existing tenants. Next slide. Um, this slide provides an overview of our goals and metrics for the overall plan. This is really what we hope to achieve. So one demonstrating that we can meet the 25% goal. And the Neighborhood Stabilization Study Area, we want to ensure there's no net loss. We want to decrease the amount of rent for severely cost burdened renters. We want to make sure we don't lose any deed restricted units beyond 2040. And we want to establish a preservation pilot program. And how we plan to, we also think it's really important to track race and ethnicity data. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristen Clements.
Thanks, Jackie, and good evening, Mayor and City Council and members of the public. I'm going to try to quickly summarize the strategies and the three P areas. And we've color coded them for your viewing pleasure to try to make some more sense out of which ones would need to come back in front of council. First on production. The red text indicates strategies that would require additional stakeholder outreach and council approvals. The approvals might be for programs or ordinances or budget authorizations. Purple text indicates that the council may have to approve an action and black indicates that council approvals have already been obtained or the strategies are more administrative in nature. So the staff could go ahead and start implementation. So grouping these production strategies so they're a bit easier to think about. Recommendations one, two, three, and four are all about getting the resources and the sites so that we could build new affordable housing. Five and six are ways to keep construction costs reasonable. And note that the park fee credit change is action the council has already approved. Recommendation seven, policies that increase ADU production. Could help lower rise areas around the Durdon Station area to also add homes so more people could walk to transit. And finally, eight and nine are about those who can access the affordable housing in the station area. And residents with disabilities and people who are in danger of being displaced from the city or have been displaced are examples of vulnerable populations. Next slide. For preservation, the first recommendation acknowledges that we do have to keep the affordable housing that we've got because we worked hard to get it. And that's going to take some dedicated focus and resources. The second item is the preservation pilot that Jackie mentioned, which would, we would fund the acquisition rehab of buildings in the area around Durdon and turn them into subsidized affordable housing. The goal is relatively modest because of the large number of small buildings in this area would be pretty time consuming to get a lot of units in this area. And part of the pilot would be to think carefully about the size and location of buildings to preserve. We'd bring this framework back to council for discussion. Numbers three and four go together. Acquisition rehab work is usually done by developers that are different than those who want to build new construction housing. So number three is about reaching out and attracting new development partners who do want to do this preservation work. And four is about building capacity of our community based nonprofits. And identifying technical assistance organizations and funding that can help with that work. So that they can focus on needs of their neighborhood better, they can learn skills and team with more experienced developers to do this work. But all of that work and training and partnering takes resources. Number five is about funding sources for preservation. First, there needs to be acquisition funding for preservation properties that can close quickly. That may not be, that may need to be offered by a partner to the city. And so we might have to help identify or build that partner capability. And then we need to make our own funding available predictably and regularly so that long term affordability can be achieved. And finally, there are complimentary policies that could support preservation efforts. I think it was mentioned before, the community opportunity to purchase is an example of a program that we're co-designing with two different community working groups. To give nonprofits the right of first offer on buildings that are up for sale, of course, that will be coming back to council for your consideration. Several strategies could also involve community land trusts. And pathways to help tenants accumulate assets that grow over time. We're trying to figure those details out now. Next slide. And the third P, protection. You'll note that almost all of these are in red, so they would require additional city council approvals. Especially four and five to consider changing or augmenting an existing ordinance. Of course, we'd be doing additional stakeholder outreach. And staff analysis and bringing that back to council. So starting at the top, number one's really about driving our services better into the community where there is need. We had already planned on doing that by setting up an eviction help center to help residents connect with resources that they need for the eviction cliff that is coming for many of them. This is a similar concept to that. Recommendation two is about the city funding additional legal services for tenants facing evictions and that could turn into more elaborate housing collaborative court model when our stakeholder partners are ready. Recommendation three also is in the anti-displacement strategy, also part of our legislative priorities about local enforcement of the state law. And that's something that this, that the city may want to consider given other legislative priorities at a given time. So we might bring that back to council. So four and five are strategies recommended based on data in the Neighborhood Stabilization Study Area around Durdon. So number four. The strategic economics work showed that in this area, 53% of renters are unprotected by any just cause eviction protection, either by the city's TPO program. Or the state's AB 1482 law. They also found that rented single family homes make up 12% of the rental stock in this neighborhood stabilization area, but they are not protected by the tenant protection ordinance. And only a few are maybe protected by AB 1482 if they're owned by a real estate investment trust or corporation. So this data led the team to conclude that expansion of the tenant protection ordinance should be considered. And number five, regarding the apartment rent ordinance. Data from the study also points to the importance of duplexes as part of the rental housing stock in this area around Durdon. While rented duplexes are only five and a half percent of all rental units in this area. Because a lot of the rental units in this area are multifamily buildings built since 1980. A lot of the duplex units are built in 79 or before. And they would be eligible to be included in the apartment rent ordinance. And if they were, they would constitute a third of all rent stabilized units in this area. So they could be an important part of the protected housing stock in this neighborhood. And for that reason, now that we understand better that duplexes can play an important part in the housing stock in neighborhoods, we thought it was time to look again at whether they should be included in the ARO citywide. And finally, we recommend exploring whether the Certificate of Preference Program could apply in the Durdon Station area, which is kind of an enhanced tenant preference, which may be able to be used for priority in rental situations or potentially home buyer programs as well. And with that, I'll hand it back to Jackie.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay. Was released in November for public comment. Outreach on the Durdon Housing Plan was conducted through 18 events and activities. Approximately 1,000 participants connected to the plan directly or indirectly or indirectly through the comprehensive engagement process for the Durdon Station area. In developing the plan, the station area advisory group, residents and surrounding businesses located in the area and in the outreach areas. All provided input on their priorities. This community engagement and feedback was a key driver to identifying many ideas and strategies and changes that were made to the final plan based on what we heard. Next slide. So finally, this is our last slide tonight. We're asking you for your adoption of this plan. The plan contains again 21 individual strategies. Many still need to be vetted by impacted stakeholders. If you adopt the plan, we will return this fall with a work plan and we will prioritize the strategies based on staff capacity, available resources and timing. For example, in order to implement a pilot COPA program, the stakeholders who are currently working on creating COPA must complete their work. The council must review it and take final action on the proposal. Therefore, implementing a pilot COPA program would not be a strategy we would come forward with immediately because additional work still needs to be completed. Finally, I want to thank the hundreds of impacted residents and business owners who participated in the planning efforts and who provided their feedback throughout this process. I also want to thank Kristen Clements, who oversaw this project, Rachel Vanderveen, who was our lead on the Durdon Project overall. Our consulting team, Strategic Economics, BTA, who inspired our work. And Lori Servino, who kept us on track and was always there to help us out when we needed her. So thank you again. And with that, we are done with our presentation.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you to everyone for the presentations. We are again in the final couple hours here, so I'm going to limit public comment to one minute. I neglected to thank Tim Rude in my list, which while lengthy was unfortunately not exhaustive. So thank you, Tim, for all the work you've done on this. And everybody on Rosen's and Jackie's team to move this forward. I also want to thank in particular all the members, the Durdon Area Neighborhood Group, Laura Winter, Edward Psalm, Brett Weaver, Mary Pizzo. Kevin Christman, Harvey Dernell, Sarah Springer, Bill Rankin, and I think I mentioned Kathy Sutherland. Appreciate your continued collaboration with us as we work to get this right. And thank you, Rosen, for your many meetings with the community as well. Okay, let's go to the community now. Neil Bobar, welcome, Neil.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. An Elbow Bar with the California Apartment Association. And I wanted to just voice our comments on this issue. The Durdon Housing Implementation Plan contains a number of recommendations that clearly demand further consideration, as was mentioned by the Housing Director, to fully vet for the challenges they will create. The recommendations mentioned need a thorough vetting to ensure they don't cause harm or interfere with the management of rental properties and allow San Jose to continue to be an attractive place for developers to invest in. CAA appreciates the Housing Department's efforts for releasing a supplemental memo that clarifies that none of the recommendations will be actually voted on tonight and just that a work line will be developed. And CA looks forward to engaging as a stakeholder who represents the rental housing providers of the city of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Gavin Laurie.
Hi, City Council. This is Gavin Laurie with Catalyzed SV. In fall of 2020, Catalyzed SV conducted two community workshops about the Durdon Station area, one for the Vietnamese community and another for the artist and creative community. During, I wanted to provide some comments on what we heard during the meetings. Both the artists and Vietnamese workshop participants called for plenty of housing at all levels of affordability and different sizes of households, which we believe this plan includes. Also, they were very excited about how it was based around the Guadalupe River Park. And excited to hear that there's potential for farmers markets and then other park area that's being explored. Residents of the Vietnamese community also felt strongly about the need to prioritize public transportation, which is shared by Catalyzed SV. So we're excited that West San Carlos gets a dedicated bus lane, but we'd also like to see, or sorry, that San, Santa Clara, we'd also like to see West San Carlos have a dedicated bus lane and we want to see this approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeffrey Buchanan.
Mayor and Council, good evening. On behalf of Working Partnerships USA and Silicon Valley Rising, would like to encourage your support for the staff recommendations. I think we've seen certainly with the pandemic that stable housing is critically important to the health and wellbeing of our working families. I think the comprehensive approach taken by staff, looking not only at affordable housing production, but also certainly at our new policies around the preservation of affordable housing, including naturally occurring affordable housing. And tenant protections are vitally important if we're really truthfully committed to community stabilization. I think we heard a lot of business interests praising the Google Downtown West project for the inclusion of efforts around community stabilization. I think it's just as important now that we look at what city policy levers we can put into play to be able to ensure that tenants are not facing evictions, tenants are not facing rapid rises in rent increases. And I think the, the couple of policies put forward by the Housing Department here make an enormous amount of sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rowan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So what really concerns me on slide 11 is that the tunnel alignment to the airport has disappeared. Even though I produced internal high speed rail documents proving that the full track requirement for an underground station was completely bogus. So I hope that you will reconsider my offer to see firsthand how London were able to construct five two-track stations, each the size of an aircraft carrier under existing buildings. Because this is the only way we, we will ever be able to avoid four tracking to Willow Glen and Garner. In closing, I hope that you will have the same vision as former Chicago Mayor Daley. And implant a two-track underground station under downtown west before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Hello, Mayor. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can hear you, Brian.
About two months ago, I thought I had a place to stay for the rest of my life. Due to a rather stupid mistake on my part. That didn't happen, so I left my mobile home. Got a great price for it because of the fine work you ladies and gentlemen have done. I have to be careful what I say, but I can tell you what it's like to live in terror in San Jose. Where are you going to live? What are you going to do? I don't want to live in the street. I don't want to struggle and all that kind of stuff. I have a duplex now I'm living in, so God has sort of a strange sense of humor. And I am thankful. I won't be here in San Jose because I have to move eventually because of the cost, but I think it would be nice if the residents didn't have to live in terror, that they might be on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Hang in there. Edward, welcome.
Welcome. I believe Henry had some slides he was going to put up.
Thank you. Take a moment.
Thanks, Henry. Good evening, Mayor Licardo, Council members. Edward Psalm on behalf of DANG. Over the last two years, we've met repeatedly with planning staff and pointed out areas in the DSAP where the heights could easily be raised. Next slide, please. One area of concern amidst the 240 acres of the DSAP is three half blocks along its southern edge where proposed heights adjacent to single family homes have changed repeatedly. For one block, the DSAP boundary is Columbia Avenue with its 50 foot right of way. For the other two blocks, the DSAP cuts directly through. No sidewalk, road or right of way. In 2014, the proposed 5 feet. In 2019, most of the property stayed at 65 feet. In 2020, the heights were raised to 110 feet and 290 feet. In 2021, planning changed parts of the corner parcel to 65 feet and 110 feet. Next slide, please. Planning insists the likely outcome for the Arrow is a three story parking garage, but likely comes with no caveats or requirements. It could just as easily be an eight story flat facade per planning zone diagrams. We strongly encourage council to incorporate the memo from the mayor and council members Davis and Faralis. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, I'm sorry, forgive me. Is Bert first?
Right.
Yeah. Great. Bert, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor and council members. Bert Weaver, resident of Delmas Park, member of DANG. To continue up on Edward's comments, this show, this slide shows the height transitions and setbacks in a proposed design guidelines. This was shown to us many, many months ago by the planning department. The bottom blue box shows where new development is separated from homes by a street right of way. The top pink box shows where a development shares a side or rear property line with a home. It's hard to see in that pink box, but there on the bottom left it says setbacks as required by general plan or zoning ordinance. DANG repeatedly asked for what the actual setback is in this context. And it was only a week ago that they finally responded that the setback is 15 feet from the property line. We asked, why didn't they tell us this a long time ago? Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, in this slide, we took the staff's height transition diagram and added the outline of a single-family residence, which the staff left out. And we did this to better illustrate how a combined 30-foot setback would impact the neighborhood home. Dang's position is that staff misrepresented the impact such guidelines would have on a neighborhood. And further, we believe that the proposed guidelines do not even really represent the current real-world conditions. We ask if you adopt the memo from Mayor Licardo and Councilmembers Davis and Parrales. Thank you.
Thanks, Bert. Kathy?
Thank you. My name's Kathy, and once again, I'm a member of Delmas Park and a member of the Dang. My colleague spoke to the slides, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, please. My colleague spoke to the slides with conceptual drawings. I'd like to speak about what exactly what actually exists. The first picture shows where the DSAP boundary exists. It's between these homes that are only six feet apart. And 15 feet in the second picture is the width of the driveway. These pictures are not new or a surprise to the Planning Department. They were sent to them before. Next slide, please. Taking into account the previous pictures, the setback is not 30 feet. At best, it's 18 feet. There is a clear misrepresentation in the prior diagrams. The site conditions should be accurately and fairly displayed. In addition, there are single-family homes within the DSAP. The owners of these homes feel like they will be forced to leave if developments with these proposed setbacks are approved. Displacement comes in many different forms. We ask that you support the memo from Mayor Licardo and Councilmembers Davis and Parrales. Next slide.
Thank you. Mary?
Hi, my name is Mary Pizzo, and I, as Rosalind said during her opening comments, Dang has worked tirelessly urging the planning team to establish specific standards for the DSAP and Downtown West development. For example, Dang's insistence to reduce building heights actually placed the plans back to originally agreed-upon development next to single-family home areas. An appropriate setback plane transition must become a standard, not simply a guideline. And we believe landscape buffers do not go far enough to protect homes with zero lot lines alongside new development. Finally, a picture is worth 1,000 words, which is why perspective rendering should be a requirement for all development within the DSAP. Next slide, please. We would like to thank everyone that we have worked with on this project, and specifically Mayor Licardo, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Parrales for their memo dated May 24. We are ready, willing, and able to put in the work finding win-win solutions between new development and existing neighborhoods, because the confusion created over time has not really gone away. So, the Dang is looking forward to your continued support developing the Deer Down Station area, and we respectfully ask that you pass, that the council passes the memo from Mayor Licardo, Councilmembers Davis, and Perez. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right, Mike Sodergrin.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mike Sodergrin, Pac San Jose. We're in support of Downtown West and all affordable housing initiatives. We're seeking clarification, though, on the city's intent relative to the Deer Down Station itself. The amended DSAP plan lacks references as to how the historic Deer Down Station itself fits within its namesake plan. It is one of the most iconic, prominent, unique features of San Jose, and yet there is no statement of support for its very existence going forward. We are fearful that we are kicking the can down the road on this issue by deferring to the DISC process. Please, take a look at the mitigation measures that were suggested back in the 2014 DSAP process and, and give us some feedback on what is actually going to be done with the Deer Down Station so that we can take an active position on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Kaufman.
Well, hello again, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Alice Kaufman, speaking for Legislative Advocacy Director for Green foothills. We sent you a letter yesterday along with Sierra Club, Santa Clara Valley Audubon, and the Native Plant Society. And in that letter, we expressed concern over the distinct differences between the standards, guidelines, and overall quality of the DSAP as compared to the Downtown West Google Plan. As you heard earlier this evening, our organizations are all in support of the Google Plan. We are concerned about the weaknesses of the DSAP as compared to the Google Plan that simply doesn't provide the same level of benefits and protections for the community and the environment that the Google Plan does. So, we hope that we will be able to work with the city to adjust the environmental and development standards to include the same protections that the Google Plan includes. Thanks.
Thank you, Alice. Robert Aguirre.
Yeah, Robert Aguirre. I'd like to point out that several times I've tried to interject on the three Ps and add a fourth P for placement, because one of the things that we're not talking about is who are the people that are actually going to be placed into these ELI, very low income and whatever other affordable housing. And I think it's very important that we talk about that and not just leave it up to, you know, chance or whatever happens. But that's something that should have been discussed all along. And I hope that through whatever negotiations or whatever plan changes are going to be made moving forward, that we do not reduce the number of housing units available. I think right now that the 1,000 units or 25% of the 4,000 that are planned on being built, I hope that that number does not get reduced through some sort of negotiation with either apartment associations or developers, and we keep to our promise to try to house as many people as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Reed, welcome. I'm sorry, Mr. Baikman, forgive me. I just skipped right over you.
Hi, thank you. Blair Baikman here to comment on this item. With Deer Down Station planning and Google West planning kind of connected, what I said in the previous public comment, to really consider affordable housing ideas for ELI, VLI, and mixed income. You are talking about those issues. Thank you. And to have units available on, in the Lenzin-Stockton area and in the Delmas Park area, you're considering both of those areas, and I just hope we really make the efforts to what can be done with mixed income and VLI and ELI in the future for those areas as part of a overall way that you're thinking and working. I hope you can apply these good practices of community effort to the flea market area and development and how the vendors' union can have a really important part in deciding the future development of the flea market area. And be careful with the high-rise issue, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Reed, Silicon Valley at Home. First, we must acknowledge the tremendous work that city staff across departments have invested in the DSAP amendments. More jobs and more housing than within the Downtown West project, and of course, the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. Along with the Google team, they've laid the foundation to realize the commitments of 25% affordable across the station area, making the station area and the surrounding neighborhood accessible to people of all incomes. The number two highest priority when this was a council was preventing displacement and stabilizing communities. When we look back, this will be an essential measure of whether this was an inclusive and equitable redevelopment. We believe that the collective commitment to these priorities is both clear and sincere, but there's a whole lot of work to do to live up to this commitment. Housing Department has laid out the tools that they need. They will continue to need your support. As we've seen this evening already, some of these are going to feel like a heavy lift, but they're critical tools to realize the commitment you are being asked to reaffirm tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. David Meyer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. David Meyer, Silicon Valley at Home. Wanted to thank staff for their excellent work in the DSAP amendments. Truly create a bold vision, supporting with the plan framework that's enabling rather than constraining its potential, and really acknowledging the station area as an extension of downtown and must serve the shared interests of the entire city. Done tremendous work to this end, developing a housing-rich plan that's looking at over 13,000 factor new, new homes, and also really working closely with neighboring neighborhood concerns related to the heights, and they made a lot of adjustments already as they laid out in their staff presentation. We are concerned that any additional height and designs constraints, which was proposed in the memo from the Mayor and Councilmembers Parrales and Davis, has the potential to further reduce the area's capacity for new homes by hundreds of units. While these efforts appear focused on small portions of the plan area, our analysis shows a potentially quite significant impact on actual residential opportunity areas. So, we ask that the council please not make any additional constraints on heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiyomi, welcome.
Kiyomi, plus attorney with the Law Foundation. We appreciate the Housing Staff's work in consideration and crafting, you know, these affordable housing recommendations for the DSAP area. We hope that you'll explore how we can expand these crucial tenant protections and housing preservation policies to as many housing types and people as possible so that no San Jose is displaced. This past year has been especially difficult for our low-income tenants. To illustrate, San Jose, the Law Foundation saw an 1,100% increase in clients reporting unemployment benefits as their main source of income. People of color and women have been disproportionately impacted and will feel the financial effects from COVID-19 for many years to come. So, we encourage you to maximize effectiveness of these strategies and continue to seek meaningful community input so our housing policies meet the needs of our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Shore. Alex, I think you're still muted.
Alex Shore, Catalyzed SV. Want to echo the comments from SV at Home, concerned a little bit about the memo that talks about looking at development at 90 feet in height. Is there a way Councilmember Davis, Parrales, and Mayor Licardo, you'd be willing to look at an amendment or a friendly amendment that would offset any of those reductions in heights with increases in height? We just can't afford to lose any affordable housing, and we can't afford to lose height in our city because we can't build that tall in the Downtown West area because of the airport. So, we need every single one of those units. And as I said at the Planning Commission, it's not that single-family homes and neighborhoods aren't important. It's that the need to house every single person in our city, especially the houseless, is the most important priority. And we have to, as we put human dignity first and foremost, we have to prioritize that above and all. So, ask if you'd consider an amendment to that tonight as part of your motion.
Thank you, Alex. The person with the number, Colin, user number one.
Hey there. Let me turn my TV down. Just, guys are making the news there with the vote, the Google Village. Good news, everybody. Well, like I say, just hope there's going to be enough infrastructure for this project. That includes police and fire. I mean, you know, buildings burned down in my neighborhood. Unbelievable. Got two burned-out buildings in my neighborhood. I'm hoping that they're going to be able to prevent or put out fires in this new village. Cops never show up to my neighborhood. Takes them an hour. I hope they show up there. I mean, I saw what happened with three people who were drinking beer in downtown San Jose a couple of years ago. They couldn't handle it. Took like, what, 60 personnel, 25 cop cars, unbelievable. So, I don't know how they're going to be able to handle 4,000 new people, residents down there. Electricity, sewer, gas, I wait, no natural gas. It's going to be illegal. You guys aren't allowing.
Thank you. Dave, welcome.
Hey, good evening. On behalf of the Sierra Club Loma Credit Chapter, I'd like to second Dallas Kaufman's comments. We ask that the city work with the community to adjust the environmental and development standards to include minimum creek setbacks, building setbacks, improve lighting, and bird safety requirements and guidelines, and provide adequate parks and open space that are needed to create the thriving and healthy community that we desire. I would also just like to remind you that even in the downtown area, San Jose still needs to comply with the Habitat Agency's creek setbacks, which require at least 35 feet of the setback, even in areas that have been previously developed. While, you know, there are exceptions, there are no exceptions less than 35 feet. So, please continue to work with us. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, returning to council then. Councilmember Parrales.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you again, staff. And all of our community members are hanging in tough with us here tonight. A lot of very important decisions happening, and obviously, a lot of extensive work. And for, you know, certainly the entire Deer Down Station area, this is a great opportunity. And I think that's one of the things that got a little overshadowed with the Google project over the years was a lot of people focusing on that, but not recognizing the opportunity that we were creating in the entire Deer Down Station area plan. And that's really, that significance is attempted to be all enclosed here in these efforts. And I think what we're seeing is that certainly there's still a little bit more work to go. And as always is with land use planning, it never really ends, I guess. Maybe until something gets built that's going to sit there for 100 years. There's always that opportunity, and I think we, we have some opportunities still moving forward to be able to ensure that we really maximize the opportunities in this entire Deer Down Station area. And so, I just want to echo again the thanks from staff and to our community members that have worked with us, especially from the Dang, the Deer Down Area Neighborhood Group, and who will continue to work with us as we move through the next stages of the plan. And Mayor, are you interested in a motion on 8.1 and 10.3?
Take them separately. Let me just check in with Nora.
You, you can, the, if you, I'm not sure where the, where the votes are going to line up. One of the items that you have to approve requires a two-thirds majority. Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, we, that's fine. We can do them separate. Which one did you want to do first, Mayor? I was, I was going to make a motion right now on 10.3 if that was all right.
Let's do that. Sure.
Okay. So, I'd like to move the staff recommendation on 10.3 and then include in it the direction from the memorandum that I co-signed with Councilmember Davis and Mayor Licardo.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can invite Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, my comments are mostly about 8.1, so we can proceed with 10-point.
Okay.
See with 10.3.
Active in that item. Any comments or questions on 10.3? All right, I think we're ready for a vote then.
Manes?
Yes.
Parrales?
Yes.
Owen?
I.
Roscoe?
I.
Davis?
Yes.
Asparza? Yes. Arenas?
Yes.
Uli?
I.
Maham?
I.
Jones?
I.
Licardo?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank staff for coming forward with this plan that will be seeking to mitigate accompanying risk of displacement for everything else that we've been approving tonight. You know, we're on the cusp of an exciting year of growth. Plan developments like Downtown West and various of our urban village have the potential to spur unprecedented investment in our communities, creating thousands of units of affordable housing, redefining the landscape of Silicon Valley. While we acknowledge and celebrate the opportunities created by these developments, many in our community are concerned that they may exacerbate the threat of displacement in the Deer Down Station area and throughout the city. Obviously, we've talked a lot before about the history of low-income residents, in particular, people of color who were barred by inequitable policies and the legacy discriminatory redlining practices from sharing in San Jose. in particular, people of color who were barred by inequitable policies and the legacy discriminatory redlining practices from sharing in San Jose's growth and prosperity. So it's important that we make sure this pattern doesn't continue and that working families aren't left behind as our city continues to grow and develop. So staff's memo concerning the Dear Don Affordable Housing Implementation Plan makes it clear that their recommendations are being made with justice in mind. And I commend the Housing Department for keeping our most vulnerable communities at the heart of this plan. I was particularly, just one quick question, interested in, um, hearing more about this idea of, um, the satellite office. And I think there was a mention somewhere about potential satellite offices in other places as needed. What, what are the thoughts there?
Sure, this is Jackie, uh, from the Housing Department. So, um, before we came up with the eviction help center, we had thought about the satellite, uh, offices. And now what we're thinking in the short term is more something more like a mobile office or pop-up locations, uh, in order to be as responsive quickly, uh, given the impending eviction cliff. So we are starting off with a, some sort of office, satellite office, that would be within a community so that people don't have to come downtown to City Hall, but really want to locate where people are. But again, we know one office is not enough to meet the na- the need. And we have seen, uh, during the pandemic, how pop-ups and satellites have worked or mobile. So that's what we're going to try.
Great, I think that's a, that's a great idea, I appreciate that. So I support the recommendations in this item and I hope that we as a city continue to find innovative and sustainable ways to preserve affordable housing and protect working families from displacement. Tomorrow, my office will be submitting a budget document to study implementing the right to legal counsel ordinance for residents facing eviction, which could be another key tool in our arsenal as we work to fight displacement in San Jose. And I know there's some similar recommendations here in this, um, memo from staff and look forward to working towards, uh, providing resources to people and preventing evictions in the city as we continue to grow our economy and our, um, housing stock. So thank you. And I'll move that we approve item 8.1.
Second.
Thank you, cast member. Yeah, I appreciate you raising the issue of satellite office and Jackie, I, I really appreciate your response. Because I, I'd certainly much rather be paying for people than to be paying for rent, uh, somewhere to, to rent an office. I think, you know, the, the key, as you know, is, is having the, the human beings who can actually reach out in, in the right language to be able to uh, help folks in, in need, be able to navigate, uh, the challenges here. So, uh, I'd certainly support, uh, a virtual office or pop-up or anything that actually supports staffing that I think you need much more than you need the, um, the storefront. So, um, council member, uh, Arenas.
Uh, I'm going to make this really quick, I just want to thank the Housing Department for their leadership. As, you know, I was reading the whole, uh, implementation plan, it just, um, we're on the cutting edge here. I'm always proud of, of what we're doing in San Jose, but specifically this implementation plan that doesn't allow for our affordable housing to be planned at the very end. Sometimes there are some projects that, um, happen in, in, uh, throughout our city or throughout our, the area. That sometimes, uh, it does, doesn't pencil out and, uh, affordable, the affordable housing piece is always, um, done at the very end. And so this is one of the, one of the concerns that I had when we had a, a Brown Act, uh, Mayor sometime ago, we're, uh, just in the, uh, beginning stages of the Google project. And I know this goes beyond, beyond the, the Dear Don. Before, beyond Google, this is for the whole Dear Don Station area. And so, um, this is just absolutely impressive. And I just want to thank all of, uh, your staff, Jackie, and yourself and your leadership. And of course, all of the advocates who contributed to this, uh, it is absolutely incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Davis.
Thank you, uh, there are some things I agree with and some things I don't agree with in this implementation plan. Um, I particularly do agree with having programs for us to acquire and renovate and deed restrict properties, I think that is a great idea. The question I have is, when you come back to us with the items that you need to come back with, will they include information from, um, researchers on the effectiveness of these programs, if they've been enacted in other areas?
Yes, we will, we can include information regarding how they have been implemented in other cities and how they work.
Great, not just, not just the implementation and, and how they work, but whether or not they actually do what they purport to do, which is preserve housing. Because all of my economic training about rent control and the more restrictive it is, is that it actually decreases the quality and quantity of housing supply. So I'd be very interested when you come back to ensure that we have information that what we're putting in place is actually going to help the people that we're trying to help. Thank you.
Yes, and, and the thing I might add is, uh, we will be coming back with our rent stabilization program, objectives and outcomes. And it is those exact questions that we want to be tracking for our own program. So would love to have a conversation with you for, you know, at a later date on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Cohen.
Jimenez.
Jimenez. Yes, my apologies, yes.
Paralas.
Yes.
Owen.
Hi.
Roscoe. Crossco.
Hi.
Davis.
Yes.
Asparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Oli.
Hi.
Mayhem.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
LaCarter.
Hi. Okay, mercifully, that brings our meeting to a close just before the 11 o'clock hour. Uh, we now have time for public forum, uh, open forum. There any members, uh, the committee who would like to speak? Mike Sodergrun can speak about any item that is not on the agenda.
Thank you, councilmembers, I just wanted to share something that I may have seen itself as our column, but National Trust in Association with American Express awarded Casa Vicky a grant for $40,000. They, they were looking for, you know, places that experienced, uh, financial hardship, have operated and contributed to the neighborhood's history and identity for at least 25 years. Uh, they were small, independently owned restaurants, uh, with preference given to businesses owned by underrepresented people, groups, um, especially women. And, um, this was just a great celebration. This was one award out of, uh, 50 across the, I'm sorry, 25 across the United States and four in California alone, so San Jose got it. Oakland got one and LA got two.
And thank you, Mike, I understand that actually PAC SJ was pretty instrumental in helping, uh, marshal that effort uh, on behalf of Casa Vicky, which is a great asset, actually in my own neighborhood. And grateful that Maria Aguilar and her team were able to, uh, receive that, that critical funding. Roland.
Thank you, Mayor, so unless I missed it, the, um, the household solid waste was not increased, was not on the agenda tonight. And somehow I thought it was going to be. But the thing I would like to bring to your attention is that, uh, seniors have got much less requirements, uh, for, you know, garbage collection than, uh, people that got, uh, children or large households. Um, I've actually been, uh, looking at what I'm doing. I take my trash out on average between two and three times a week, uh, sorry, every other two or every three weeks instead of every week. And it seems to me that, uh, a discount, um, uh, you know, should be reasonable for seniors or empty nesters. And by the way, one of our daughters lives in LA and the other one lives in Las Vegas. And thank you for your consideration, good night.
Thank you, Roland. Robert Aguirre.
Uh, Robert Aguirre, uh, I still want to keep pushing the idea that we need to have a, a commission or some sort of, uh, group of people to represent the unhoused. Decisions are constantly being made by this council and with little or no input from the unhoused community. And, uh, I know that I speak here, uh, Scott Largent and, and a few others, uh, occasionally speak. But it, it's not enough. We need to have real representation and I seriously could, uh, would like you to consider, uh, putting together such a commission. I know you, you, uh, Mayor, you've put together, uh, a group to deal with gangs, to deal with, uh, all kinds of different things that are going on in the city. Even just the SAG group, every, everything that needs a decision that you want to get community input, you, you are able to start up, uh, a group to do that. And I, I seriously would like to get one going for the unhoused community. So please consider that.
Thank you, Robert. And I'm not sure if Jackie's on the line right now, but I know that, uh, at your suggestion, uh, we are actually adding to our housing commission, Jackie, I see you there, did, did you want to just add?
Yeah, so we are in the process of looking at the Housing Commission per the city council's direction on adding a, a minimum of one seat for an unhoused or previously unhoused person. So we are in that process and should be getting back to the council, uh, I would say probably early next fall. It's coming.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, the person with the call-in user one, identity.
Yeah, open forum here, uh, yeah, I mean, I just want to let everybody know that, uh, both, uh, Sam and Pam think there should be more, more code enforcement people in your neighborhoods. And, uh, i- if you think there's too much code enforcement with people trying to regulate your sheds and your flagpoles and God knows what else, let them know that, uh, it's just really tyranny, it's administrative tyranny that they're, that they're promoting. And it's terrible. And yeah, Pam and Sam think that they need more people peeking over your fence into your bedroom window. I don't know if you know, Sammy, maybe I'll keep my underwear drawer open so they can peek into my window and look at my underwear drawer. I don't know what you guys want, but that's what you guys think is great, is more code enforcement. You also need to reduce the taxes on the utilities that are all going up, that you guys did a lousy job representing the citizen gas.
Thank you, Alex Shore.
Alex Shore with Catalyze SV. Part of a, a coalition of organizations joining with the vendors at the Barriessa Flea Market Association to work on a development that prevents the displacement of the vendors and benefits the most number of folks in the community. Thanks to Councilmember Cohen, to the other members of the council in the past and coming up in the weeks ahead and to city staff for meeting with the vendors and members of this coalition on this issue to hear about their experiences and perspectives. I think we learned tonight that great community engagement can lead to really amazing consensus and results. And I just want to spread a positive message that we, in working together as a community, city and developers, can create a triple win situation for all of us. So thank you to the council and staff for digging in in the weeks ahead. We look forward to talking to you and we know we can find a really great solution that benefits us all.
Thank you, Catherine Mathiessen. Catherine, we're not able to hear you right now, appears your mic is muted. All right, we'll try coming back to you if, uh, you can get your mic to work. Mr. Baikman.
Hi, thank you to Robert Aguirre and to Catalyze SV for working with, uh, the Vietnamese community and a hello to the east side of San Jose, uh, for this important meeting today. It is interesting that even with possible upcoming, uh, natural disasters in the next few years, we had a time to better consider a process of reimagine, defund and equity to define our future in our local neighborhoods, uh, at this time in San Jose. Thank you. We had a time to seriously address the future of the prison, military, industrial, technology complex of this country. And a time to define from this, uh, define ideas of peace and an end to the ideas of continual war. We had a time when, uh, everyday community can be allowed again to better participate and define what can be good democratic practices and community sustainability. And we've all been trying to apologize as a country for the past several years now in the serious work toward the good future of peace and sustainability. Thanks for the meeting tonight and, uh, see you guys tomorrow and in the future.
Thank you, Blair. Catherine, welcome.
Now, could you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Oh, good. Um, I just wanted to share an idea that I, um, found in, um, in England. In England, they have in their, all their gardens and open spaces, they give free housing um, and the, to the people who then take care of the, of the land. And I think it, it would be a really good idea for, for us to do that with all our parks and, um, could, because then, um, they would really take, uh, and have a commitment to the space and feel like it was really theirs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Catherine. All right, thank you everyone for participating in tonight's meeting, uh, the meeting's adjourned.